Do a countdown to five.
Recording in progress.
Happy Tuesday, everybody. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Welcome to this afternoon session of our council meeting today, Tuesday, December 17th, 2024. And with that, I will go ahead and pass it to Clementine to do roll call and make announcements to the public.
Councilmember Barber, the record will reflect she's absent for this meeting. Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Hoffa.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
And Mayor Williamson.
Here.
Information on participating in today's meeting and providing public comment, including remotely by Zoom or telephone, is available on the agenda, which is online at monterey.gov/agendas. Remote commenters, you will be muted until it is your turn to speak and a timer will be shown on the screen. If you're connected on Zoom, the timer is accurate with no delay. In-person attendees, please keep your phones and devices muted to prevent audio interference with our meeting, and thank you for participating in your city government.
All right. Thank you, Clementine. And with that, we'll go to our presentation for today. Item number one is recognition of Councilmember Alan Hoffa. This is a surreal moment. Alan's been on the council now for 12 years and, you know, I'm just so thankful. I don't think that I would have stepped forward in the first place if it wasn't for for your leadership and in our friendship and, you know, watching you perform on the council. I think my my biggest takeaway is your your emphasis on compromise and trying to bring all sides together. And gosh, what more do we need in the world right now than trying to find common ground and being able to understand one another? And you exemplify that in so many ways. So on behalf of the entire city, I'm so grateful and thankful for your dedication to our community. And I know we're not done seeing you. I know that you'll still be engaged and involved. And just so deeply grateful for your service to our community. And with that, I'll pass it to Hans. It says pass to Hans. It says it right there.
Are you you want to solicit other comments now, or do you want to?
We're here. No, I'll. So so we have a gift for you. So we'll go ahead and present this to Alan at this point, and then I think I'll then pass it to Hans for.
That's what I see. Just just talk.
And then pass it to Hans.
Yeah. Let me let me make a.
Do we want to let council maybe make comments first? All right.
That would be awesome.
I was going to say, Mayor, I think that we, as a council, we have lots to say about Councilmember Hoffa tonight. And we certainly want to give him an opportunity to address the the city of Monterey as well. So we want to hear from Mr. Hoffa. But before he starts, I want to say it's been a pleasure and an honor to be able to serve with you for the 10 years on the council. I won't bore you with any stories, but I first met Alan in 2012 when we were both campaigning. And we ran into each other multiple times in the same neighborhood. And so it was like a nod and a wink. It's like, hey, we ought to get together and get a cup of coffee and figure out who we are. So we met, had a cup of coffee. We continued campaigning. And Alan prevailed, and it was great. And then two years later, I was able to join the council and get to work with Alan Hoffa. So best to you and Arlene in your pause. I'm sure it's not a retirement from what you're doing. You'll do lots more things for this community because I know you have a love of service. You have a love of this community, and all things are good with you. And I've been really able to learn from you and to work on some large initiatives, complicated policies. It is complicated running municipal government, but it is certainly more joyful with people like you. And I much appreciate all that you have brought to your service for these 12 years.
My turn. A couple of years ago, when I was appointed, Alan, you were one of the first ones to reach out and ask me if we could meet up for coffee. And I really appreciated that, being pretty new to local government. I understood that I had a pretty steep learning curve and meeting with you that day and just hearing from your experience, that to me meant meant a lot. And it was, I think, really set the set the foundation for where I wanted to move forward in terms of decisions and all that. And and really taking a look at how how important it is to to look at all sides. And I think that's something that I've seen you do throughout the two years that at least that I've been involved in. And I really appreciate that about you. I appreciate trying to figure out where is, like Mayor was saying, where is that opportunity for compromise and, you know, where where can we make adjustments so that, you know, we can all feel like we're walking away with something? So I really appreciate that opportunity that you've provided me to learn from you in in the model of an educator with the patience. I appreciate that. And also just appreciate everything you've done for the city, for your constituents, for our residents here. So so really appreciate that and and wish you the very best and and wish you well in everything else that you have lined up coming up. So yeah, congratulations and thank you.
I was going to say after Ed spoke, you know, we've been doing this thing over the last two years on the council where where after the afternoon session and before the evening session, we'll usually stay for dinner and have our closed session. And it's a good time for us to to get to know each other a little bit. And I think one of the highlights of having Alan on the council has been that we always get a very large veggie pizza. And and so I thought you were going to say something about maybe the veggie pizza is going to go away, but.
This is Alan Hoffa's day. Whatever you want.
You need to eat. You need to eat a piece of veggie pizza.
You, I'd do it.
All right, our city manager.
All right, Dr. Barber asked me to read a few remarks from her to you. So this is Dr. Barber speaking right now through me with a German accent. Alan, thank you. Councilmember Hoffa, it has indeed been a pleasure serving with you. I'm sorry I'm not here in person to give this tribute to you, but know that I value you and all that you have done for our city of Monterey. You leave an awesome legacy to follow. Thank you. So that's Dr. Barber. And as 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 your city manager and also as someone who has worked with you for a long, long time, please allow me also to say a few words about Councilmember Alan Hoffa. Alan Hoffa and part of our core team met in, I think, was 2010 or so when when you were leading a group of campers that was called Occupy Monterey. And at that time, you came to the city with with another spokesperson of of this movement that that was a consequence of the failure of our Wall Street market at the time and the lenders, the banks that had basically called in a lot of the the home loans and a lot of folks were leaving their homes. And then you were part of the Occupy Monterey movement. And we met there. And we we learned very quickly that you were a person we could work with. And yes, you stood on on interesting principles for us in those days, but I think we worked something good out and the previous leadership of the city was smart enough to to allow Occupy Monterey to go up to the campground and and I think things took took a turn from there. And then I think that was already showing you also how we work in the city of Monterey. We were collaborative and then you were collaborative. And then when you became a council member in 2012, we were all saying, oh, oh, but we we immediately understood that at the core of everything you were doing was the city of Monterey, your love, your passion for Monterey. You are a fair person. And you also were the council member that that I credit the most to always try to find common ground. Whenever we were having items in front of council and it sounded like a three, two, you were trying to reach out to the other side and trying to figure out how can we work work together on this topic? Because Monterey is is at the heart and core of everything. And if we can facilitate compromises, that everyone benefits from that. And you were the motor of of almost 90% of all those things. And sometimes also, we as staff recognized that you had principles, but you also understood sometimes to give in a little bit on some of the principles, and I will not mention which they were, but it's it was noticed by us. We appreciated you very much. You were also someone who appreciated staff and never stood behind any other statements of 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 the times, the statements de jour, whatever was good on that days, who do we bash in staff? You were always there to to protect us and 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 stood up and took initiative sometimes to basically set the tone also for the rest of council meetings. So we noticed that we appreciated that. And I wrote on the gift that we have for you also, you were one of the best council members we ever had and said, don't tell anyone else. And.
Wait a second.
And I mean it. The last statement I wanted to make before Tyler Williamson, we had the distinctive Alan Hafta laughter. And Tyler followed you with a with a much louder laughter, but you brought a lot of joy also to all of us when you when you burst out in laughter. And so we will miss you very, very much. And we wish you well and your wife Arlene as well. So that's from the staff side.
I will say, though, when Alan laughs, it's it's something serious. So it's a really good one when when he breaks out his laughter. So please, Alan. So first of all, I just, wow. Thank you all for your comments. I really appreciate them. I want to start off by thanking my wife, Arlene. As all of you know, you can't do this work without the support of your family, and she's always been there. I'm sorry, it's emotional. I wanted to also thank all my friends and supporters, all of our residents for, you know, helping to guide us, for giving us good advice and for letting us know when when we were straying off the path. You make the you make the difference. Mayor and council, it's been an honor and a privilege to work with all of you, as well as mayors and council members from the past. You know, one of the things about this city, I'm not sure who invented the term. I'm not sure who was Dan Albert, senior, but we call it the Monterey Way. And if you visit other city councils or other governing bodies, it's not always the same. We have vigorous differences of opinions here. We have different principles and different backgrounds. And sometimes we can argue our points heatedly, but in the end, we always respect each other. And that's so important. And after the after the votes taken, you know, we move forward. And we work together for the benefit of this community and the Monterey Way. I've been I'm proud to have been a part of it. I know all of you are a part of it and will continue that practice going forward. I also wanted to thank Hans and Chrissy and all of the staff. Monterey is blessed to have an amazing staff that work tirelessly to try to make this a successful city, a beautiful city, and and they succeed. As a council member, we come in or mayor, we come in with all kinds of ideas, things we want to change. But there's the day-to-day work that our staff are already doing. And nothing that we want to accomplish can be accomplished without the staff, without the city manager. And again, really, really honored to have been able to work with all of you. I just wanted to mention a couple of things that I am proud of. You know, when I came on council, I think my main goal was homelessness. At that time, we were devastated by the housing crisis and and the economic crisis of the Great Recession. We were seeing people, you know, working people losing their homes right and left, and it was heartbreaking. And we saw homelessness in Monterey County from 2007 to 2009 quadrupled. I mean, you can look at the homeless census and it went from about 700 to 2,800 in two years. And we've it's been pretty hard to bring that down, but we we have. Here, I've represented the city on Community Human Services. And incidentally, if you haven't made your end-of-the-year donations, it's a great organization, folks. They they work, they they address drug addiction, they help youth in schools, and they run a number of our shelters. So we started Casa de Noche Buena for women and families in Seaside, and I think it was 2019. And then a year or two ago, we opened Schuman-Hart House in Monterey. Before that, there were no shelters for women, none. And 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 there weren't enough for families. We've also, our council, you know, expended some of our funds to expand the emergency shelter for homeless and runaway youth. Again, in 2012, we had six beds in all of Monterey County for homeless and runaway youth. We, you know, the city was able to to basically triple that. So I think there's 18 beds now at Safe Passage and Safe Place. You know, our roads were in pretty bad shape and, you know, Councilmember Ed at that time worked with me and Mayor Clyde, former Mayor Clyde and staff and council at that time to pass Measure P. And, you know, roads are in a lot better condition, and that's something I'm proud of. Affordable housing has been an issue, continues to be an issue. I know the council will continue to work on it, council and staff. But we did build the Van Buren Senior Affordable Project that opened in, I think, 2018 or 2019. And hopefully, these derelict buildings behind us in the next couple of years will become beautiful affordable housing. And then the last thing I wanted to mention is campaign finance. So one of the problems that I see nationally at the state and even at the local levels is the corrosive impact of big money on our campaigns. And it's it's a real problem, folks. We were starting to see that here. And then in 2019, we passed a campaign finance ordinance. At that time, I think it was $500 per person or org. I think because of inflation, it might be 570 or something now. But that's a reasonable amount of money. But I was shocked when I first ran for council in 2012, people could give anything. There were literally no limits, which is kind of crazy when you think about it. And we've seen in Salinas this year what can happen. And that might have happened here, but it hasn't. So I'll end with that and just again, express my appreciation to everyone. And looking forward to watching you all continue to do the great work. Looking forward to watching Gene Rash, who'll be joining the council in a minute, work with you. And thank you all. Thank you. Why don't we give a sending ovation to him? I did it already.
Been looking forward to this for a while. I think.
Here we go, it is.
Have you been peeking?
All right, why don't we give it one more time for 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 Alan? And we now will take it to public comment. So for all those in the chamber, if you would identify yourself by either standing to the left of the podium or raising your hand. And in the meantime, I'm going to check with folks on Zoom to use the raise hand function. And we'll do a countdown to five, four, three, two, one. We have two online. We have it looks like three, four in the chamber, five in the chamber. Anybody else? So I see two folks that aren't standing. And just so that everybody knows, we capture everybody who wants to speak during public comment at the beginning of the public comment period, then we close it. So if you don't identify yourself at the beginning, you won't be able to add yourself later. So I just want to do one last check in the chamber. We have the four that are standing and then Gene over here on the other side. Does anybody else want to speak on this one? For this is specifically for Alan Hoffa regarding Alan Hoffa's recognition. Okay, so we lost one. So we have four in the chamber, and then I'm going to do a countdown one more time on Zoom for five, four, three, two, one. And we have one on Zoom. So we'll go ahead and start in the chamber.
Okay. Good afternoon. I'm Hans Janisch, but I am speaking really for all of the Monterey Vista Neighborhood Association tonight here. We want to really thank you, Alan, for your 12 years of solid service to the the city of Monterey and the beautiful little community that we we live in. You you've proven to be proven and and demonstrated your really your ability to be a leader and your role in leadership, leading the council in in many ways has really stood out to the public and has been noticed by everybody. You've had great influence on the council and its overall direction. What especially stands out to us are two things, your efforts on campaign finance, like you mentioned, so that we can really elect candidates on their abilities rather than on their cash. their cash account that they are able to raise. And second, we want to point out your work on the, our cellular, our new cellular ordinance. Because after MVNA almost became a guinea pig for Verizon's attempt at testing a G5 network in our neighborhood, we really appreciate your effort into getting that new ordinance in place to avoid these kind of situations in them, in the future. So as said before, we note your ability to listen to all sides to, and to do the research necessary before coming back to council, finding the common ground, and compromise when needed. With that said, Gene will have some large shoes to fill, and we all wish the new council great success in the next two years. And finally, behind every great man, there's a woman. So we thank Arlene and really appreciate her for sharing your time with all of us. So thanks again for your last 12 years of work for us. As a small token of our appreciation, we have something to give to you. And with it, we hope you can enjoy fair winds and following seas. And we look forward to hearing about your next adventures. Thank you.
It's all right. He's got friends.
Good afternoon. I wanted to say a couple of words for Alan. When I started talking about affordable housing in this area, I met with Alan first. He was the go-to guy for that. And little did I know I would get so sucked into the topic seven, eight years later. But Alan was really the, the only one that wanted to talk to us about that at the time with the council that we had then. So he was very educational with myself, Karen O'Neil, also, we were the ones that started. And, you know, he educated me on, on a lot, not just housing, but politics. I was completely, completely green, never had been involved in politics before. And quickly learned that if we wanted to address the affordable housing problem, we had to get involved in politics. So there were a couple of elections that I was so clueless. I had to call Alan and say, who do I vote for? I had no idea, you know, who the people were, especially on Central Committee. I'm like, who are these names? I have no idea who they are. And, I mean, little did I know that now people come to me and ask me who to vote for. And it's been really, really educational and fulfilling to see the progress that we've made in this city, especially this last election, that I have people in our adjacent neighboring cities that are coming to me and saying that they wish their city councils were as good as ours. And asking for help on trying to address some of the things that we've done here. So I wanted to thank Alan for that early, early support and vision that really has changed our city. I mean, having those homeless shelters is huge. I mean, there were none on the peninsula. So it's a big, it's a big legacy that you leave behind with that alone. So congratulations on your retirement, and I'm sure we'll be crossing paths again.
Bruce Neta, I, I want to start with, when I first met Alan, I was kind of semi-campaigning for somebody else. And I met him at the, at our neighborhood picnic, and I, I wasn't that impressed. But I got to tell you, he changed, changed my mind big time. And I campaigned for him after that, from then on. He, he's going to really be missed. I want to, there's so many things we could bring up, successes by Alan, but things that he accomplished. But I'm going to bring up one that isn't maybe thought of as much, and that is how he handled the wharf leases. We got to a bitter place because of his handling. I also want to say that you, you may not always agree with him, but you always knew he was going to make the right decision because of the process in which he did that, made that decision. He, he taught us all, or by example, if, if nothing else, how to, to be a critical thinker. And that is something that is dearly needed in these days. I wish he could teach the country how to, to do what he's shown us, how you can do that. But yeah, thank you, Alan.
Gene, did you want it? Oh, nope. Okay, so we'll go to our online speakers.
This is Tom. Tom's turn to go ahead. Tom, it's your time for speaking.
Sorry, I didn't unmute myself. I just want to keep it, I'll keep it brief here. I want to say, first of all, happy holidays to everybody. And Alan, the thing I like about you the most is the way you listen to people and the way that you address their concerns and the way that you explain your rationale when you make a decision. For me, that makes all the difference in the world, that people hear that their concerns are being recognized. And you go through your logic and you, and you explain why you're going to make the decision you make. So I really do appreciate that. And in case we don't get the opportunity to say so later on, I want to really welcome Gene to the council. I'm sorry, I can't be there in person right now. But the best to you, Alan, whatever you do in your life, and thank you very much.
Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and close general public comment. We do, but wait, there's more. So in recognition of, of Alan's wife, on behalf of the city, we've, we have some flowers to give her. So we're going to present those to Alan because Arlene couldn't be here today. All right. And with that, we will move on to the election certification and council installment. Installation, I'm sorry. So item number two on the agenda is to adopt a resolution reciting the results of the November 5th, 2024 election, install newly elected officers. And with that, I'll pass it to Hans to introduce staff for presentation.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you so much. Our city clerk, Clementine Bonnacline, will continue the process.
This will be the shortest PowerPoint ever, but I wanted to show that we did receive our certified election results from the Monterey County Registrar of Voters. You have in your packets a resolution that includes those results as certified. And staff recommends that you pass this resolution, which is required by the Elections Code. And so here are the results for our city council. So we will be swearing in these three lucky electeds today. And here are the results of our charter amendment measures. They all passed with flying colors. Very exciting. And in case anyone is curious about the language you will be using for the oath of office, it's out of our constitution of the state of California, and it is right here. And we'll be hearing it in person in just a few minutes.
Beautiful. Thank you. Are there questions on the council? Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and open it up for public comment. So anybody in the chamber wish to speak on this item? I'm just making sure. So I, I just, hold on, let me just make sure I'm reading this correctly. Because I'm, just in case folks want to speak to any of the three folks getting installed, I don't know if that's now or if they'll have a chance afterwards. Now, yeah. So if anybody wants to give recognition or appreciation for any of the three, I think this is the time to do so, because then afterwards, we'll just be moving on to the next item. We'll actually be going to a break before we move on to the next item. So there's two in the chamber. Anybody else? All right, I'll check online, do a countdown on Zoom for five, four, three, two, one. And we have one speaker online, so we'll go ahead and start here in the chamber.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Eric Palmer, former city council candidate for beautiful District Three. I wanted to publicly congratulate my new representative, Gene Rash, who we all know has spent many hours in this chamber and who, who we know will be ready today to be a council member. For the, those of you who are following our race closely, you know it was an exciting race until the very end while past Election Day. So congratulations, Gene, on a hard-fought race to the finish, and thank you for stepping up to represent us as you long have. It was a, it was an absolute honor to run for Monterey City Council. I stand here feeling very proud of the outcome of our local election. While I may not have had the winning campaign, losing by a margin of 13 votes. I had a very successful campaign and winning 49.73% of the vote of my neighbors, along with the backing of regional leaders across the county. This was a life-affirming, life-changing experience that I will be eternally grateful for and forever motivated by. I want to thank the residents of District Three for opening your doors to me and my family, inviting us into your homes, porches, and backyards for profound, interesting, funny, heartbreaking, and always captivating conversations from all walks of life. Thank you for your patience and attention to my children, who are with me almost every step of the way. I got to connect with so many people every single day, and I can't describe you the hope that this experience has instilled in me from meeting my wonderful civic-minded neighbors. To me, the most positive outcome of this election was the reelection of Mayor Tyler Williamson and Councilmember Gino Garcia. This election sent a clear signal that hope for a better future for all is what Monterey residents want. Through your example, especially this year, along with Councilmember Barber, I'm hopeful that you jump-started a new era of welcoming new voices into Monterey City Hall while embracing the wisdom of longtime community leaders. So thank you for uplifting this new voice that stands before you, a political newcomer who came just a handful of votes away from being a council member, along with the record number of applicants to boards and commissions this year due to your community engagement. Also, in the spirit of inclusivity, 80% of voters wanted to enact term limits, a measure that you three championed, demonstrating your humility, showing how truly in touch you are with the voters, and giving more residents opportunities to serve. Inclusivity will be your legacy. We have some major problems to solve together, from housing, sea level rise, deferred maintenance of public buildings, to the protection of our homes against storms and wildfire. And now that the election is over, I look forward to coming together in the spirit of cooperation to collectively work towards a bright future for our special city and future generations. I ran for office because of my love for Monterey, for giving me purpose, gifting me a family and an opportunity to be an activist and career public servant in the service of my adopted home of 22 years. So thank you, City of Monterey, for this privilege, and best of luck to our outstanding city council, city leadership, and frontline staff in the critical years ahead. Thank you.
Talk about packing it in, Eric. You really got it in there right in time.
So I just wanted to make a couple of comments about how our city council has changed. We now have the most diverse council that we've ever had. I mean, that Gino got elected this time as opposed to appointed is a big deal, considering our, our neighborhood, our district, has never had representation on this council. And that alone is historic, along with the fact that he is the first Hispanic. We went, you know, now we have two women on the council after going a couple of years without any. So that's another really great change to see. And it's, again, something that our adjacent cities are really looking at and wishing that they could have something similar going on in their cities. So I'm hoping that maybe we can set an example that will be followed. You know, there's a lot of, of issues that people don't, didn't agree on. I want to thank the voters of the city of Monterey for turning out and turning out and understanding fact from fiction and distortions. And it's really important that we make it a point to fact-check and for people that are going to vote to know exactly who they're voting for and how exactly what they stand for. Because we saw that wasn't the case, really. So I don't know what the percentage was of, of voters that turned out, registered voters. But I want to thank particularly the renters in our city. Renters are 66% of the residents in the city and in the past have never really had a voice. And they have a voice now with the council that we are, we have seated. And they should have a voice as, as a significant majority and community of interest in this city. So I look forward to seeing how else the renters will be heard and included in the conversations that we have going forward. And that, yes, maybe other cities can, can follow your example, because it's a really good example. So good luck to all of you, and again, thanks to all the voters of the city.
Thank you. This is the night of the claps. All right, we're going to go to our speaker online.
This is a telephone caller with the last three digits 902. Go ahead, please.
Yes, this is Nina Beatty. I want to speak to the challenges coming ahead for this next term for all the city council. There are quite a few challenges as well as deferred actions. The challenges include water. Everybody talks about water. But one aspect of water that's not talked about is the contamination thanks to the Army. The seaside groundwater basin is under the worst section of the Fort Earth Superfund site and is now being augmented by treated sewer and industrial wastewater. And Cal Am's future desalate source water is contaminated by egg chemicals and the Fukushima radioactivity that's been coming into the bay for years now. This is not discussed, and this is a challenge that has to be addressed. We have state officials who are enacting policies that are harmful to the city, including zoning policies and mandating restrictions that we can't do anything about. We have rapid Navy and Pentagon expansion in the city and the Monterey Bay, which is already damaging, damaging nature and our quality of life. It currently, it is destroying the historic forest on Del Monte Avenue. And the Coastal Commission just approved a Navy AT&amp;T 5G microwave buoy in the bay to work with drones and undersea autonomous vehicles. The Navy knows how harmful microwave radiation is, but doses everyone in the vicinity of NPS with high levels of it. We have housing, of course, and homelessness, a high level of increasingly second homes and third homes. And there are, are measures that could be enacted, such as taxing second homes, which have even used in other communities, and those need to be explored. We have a dominance of special interests directing city policies. We have financial well-being of the city. With property taxes, only a tiny, tiny bit going to cities, so that's not acceptable. There's also become a lack of transparency and a loss of trust with city, mini-city policies. These all cannot be kicked down the road. They have to be addressed. And so I hope that as the council sits anew with this new year, that they will look at these issues and many more that are facing the city and face them, because resources and time are diminishing. Thank you.
Missing you.
Please.
I can read also what Dr. Barber would have said.
Please.
Is that okay?
Absolutely.
Gene Rash, Councilmember Rash, congratulations. I apologize for not being able to be there in person, but now I look forward to working with you in the new year. Congratulations again. Dr. Barber, with respect to Councilmember Garcia. Gino Garcia, my colleague, it is so amazing that I have the continued opportunity to work beside you. I appreciate your hard work, dedication, and commitment to our city. Congratulations. Mayor Tyler Williamson, what can I say? But I'm overjoyed at the blessing to continue to work beside you. Thank you for your leadership, commitment, and openness to listen. I thank you for your support, excuse me, I thank you for your support during the years and look forward to continuing to improve and keep our city thriving. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, and so with that, we're, we're shifting our Okay, and so with that, we're shifting our order of things around here a little bit, and I think we're just going to roll right into the ceremonial oaths.
Just adopt the resolution first.
We just, oh, oh, you're right. Yes, we do have to do that. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the certification from the Department of Elections. Second.
Motioned and seconded. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And with that, we will roll into the ceremonial oath of office. So how about, should I go first? Is that what I'm doing?
Thank you very much. It's an honor for me to have this opportunity as the proud son of Monterey. And the honor is that it gives me a chance to be able to administer this oath, which fulfills the will of the people. So with that, let me proceed with the oath. I, state your name.
I, Tyler Williamson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, Mr. Mayor.
Just want to say, Secretary, thank you so much for your willingness to do the oath for me today. Your service to our community, our region, our country, means the world to not just me, but I'm sure all of us here today. So thank you for your continued public service and for the many years to come and everything that you do to represent. And in a lot of ways, how I spoke to Alan's philosophy earlier about compromise speaks to your legacy in work in DC and representing us locally. So thank you so much for being here today. Jean, you're up. All right, I'm very honored to have been asked by Jean to conduct the swearing-in ceremony, and I know you're going to do a great job representing District Three and means a lot. So please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, state your name.
Rash.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
I do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations. Jean, on behalf of the council and the entire city of Monterey, we want to welcome you to the city council, and I hope you can accept these flowers as a small token of our gratitude for for you and your successful election and getting elected. So thank you so much, Jean. Oh, Jean, you want to, you want to?
Yes, please do.
You know I can do this in three minutes, probably two, right? Just immense gratitude and thank you for District Three voters who voted me in. I so appreciate it, and I look forward to serving to my family online, my brothers and sisters, my nieces and nephews, my kids, their kids, especially to Bill Clancy, my partner, and to Jeanie Ferrara and Brooke Knowles, who together walked with me knocking on over three thousand people's doors during the campaign. You're my warrior, Bill. To the greatest campaign committee on earth, Pat Venza, my campaign chair, to Nikki Bach, my treasurer, to Susan Nine for legal advice, to Gina Jett for running the phone campaign. To the elected officials, you know who you are, present and past, who trusted me with their truth about running the great parts that were ahead for me and the really difficult parts that did happen. And your advice and your wisdom really were essential in the journey, and I thank you all. And to Eric Palmer, for a spirited campaign and for willing to believe in democracy enough to run. It's very brave to run, so my hat off to him. He and I talked, and we were so proud of the District Three voters who returned eighty-six point one nine percent of our voters returned ballots, eighty-six percent of District Three. Yep. And to the council, the four council members and the mayor for their warm welcome. It means everything to me for all their wisdom and their advice. It's been wonderful. I so look forward to serving with them. And so what do I promise to you? I promise my availability. I promise you the best of my intellect and the most of my energy, and I promise and commit to you to listen to all sides. So thank you very much for the opportunity to serve.
Hello, everyone. I'm Emily Garcia, Gino's wife, and just want to say that I'm very honored to be sharing this special moment with you. And I just want to let you know that you inspire me every day. Very proud of you. Councilmember Garcia, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Gino Garcia.
I, Gino Garcia.
Do solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter. Thank you.
I was just remembering that it'll be, I guess, in a few weeks, about two years that I first got appointed. And let me tell you, those two years just flew by. It's been a great experience. It's been a very humbling experience. And it's been a very special experience this year, running a campaign for what is now District Four. That, I think, to many of us, many of the residents of that part of the city, is something that is sinking in and that we are taking much pride in. I feel very blessed in having the opportunity to, as a council member, also move forward initiatives that will have a positive impact on our city in general. But it also feels great that now, at this very point in history, we have formal representation for that part of the city. And that's something that, for me, is very special, and I really want to appreciate, first and foremost, my family, my wife, my kids, who have been there in many ways, supporting the twelve-plus months of campaigning. They were knocking on doors. They were very understanding when Dad had to attend events for our community, and I couldn't attend their sporting events or their music events or things like that. You know, I'd say, I'm sorry, I won't be able to attend. They would respond, Dad, it's all right. You know, we'll go the next time. And that, to me, is very special, because I did feel guilty at times not being able to attend, but they assured me that it was okay. So I appreciate that support, and I also appreciate the support throughout the campaign of the countless volunteers who were knocking on doors, who were putting up yard signs, who were advocating, who were sharing the different messages with our neighbors, the agencies, all the groups who were very supportive, who were endorsing, who were getting the word out. It's been a very special year for me. It's been, like I said, a very humbling year. So I really look forward into 2025 and my entire term to really, as I've been doing the past couple of years, keep that open-door policy, listen to what our community needs and wants, and really uplift the voice, not only of our residents in District Four, but the entire city. So thank you so much for the opportunity.
Okay, so I was so starstruck by Secretary Panetta that I forgot to share my comments, and so they are very brief. And I know that we're going to take a break after this to let some folks go here, but if I could just share a few of my thoughts. So thank you to the people of Monterey for putting your trust in me. I want to offer special gratitude for all the volunteers and donors who made this possible and to my family. I have my brother in the chambers. Give it up for my little brother, Ry Ry. And I have my other family, so I have three brothers. Ryan's the baby. Jerel is in between Ryan and I, and then our oldest brother, Steven, and then my folks. Both of them are in upstate New York and I'm sure are tuning in right now, so I love you to my family. But I want to give a special shout out to my partner, Ivan, who couldn't be here today. Thank you for your unwavering support. I signed up for this job, but Ivan has been by my side steadfast in his belief in this vision. I also want to thank our city staff. Our public servants continually impressed me with their creativity and dedication in finding new ways to engage with and serve our community. This victory is not just mine. It belongs to all of us who believe in Monterey's potential. I also want to, I am deeply honored to serve all Monterey residents, whether you voted for me or not. I'd also like to acknowledge my fellow candidate, Monique Calli, for putting yourself out there and speaking meaningful debate about this issue, the issues that matter to our city. This is how we grow stronger, and now that the elections are over, it's time to come together and build a better future for Monterey. As I've done over the last six years on the council, every decision I make will be guided by what's best for our residents. The role is about service, not self-interest. It's about ensuring that Monterey thrives for generations to come. We have the opportunity to create a future where our city is prosperous, safe, and vibrant. Together, we'll invest in housing, our public infrastructure, community engagement, and more opportunities for everyone to thrive. The work begins now, and it will take all of us. I encourage you to get involved. One way you can do this is by joining one of the city's boards, commissions, or committees. One of my goals is to build a robust volunteer program to offer even more ways for our community to engage and contribute to our shared success. Together, we'll continue making a Monterey a place we can all be proud of. I'm incredibly proud of what the council has accomplished over the past two years, and I am hopeful and optimistic about what we can achieve moving forward. Our best days are ahead. I believe in our people, in each and every one of you. And together, we will build a strong, more vibrant community for all. So thank you. Okay, and with that, we are going to take a recess to do the official oath with the city clerk, and we'll be back here in a few minutes to finish the rest of our agenda. So please take a Monterey Five. Thank you, everybody. So please take a Monterey five. Thank you, everybody. Um. So I'll ask Clementine to take role for the 2024 to 2026 council, please.
As before, Councilmember Barber is out, so that will be on the record. Councilmember Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember Rash?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
And Mayor Williamson?
Here. Thank you. And with that, we'll go to general public comment for these. This is for items that are not on today's agenda. Anybody in the chamber wish to speak? Do we have any betakers? All right, we'll check online. We'll do a countdown to five, four, three, two, one. We have two folks online. So we'll go ahead and start in the chamber.
Could I please have a little camera action on me here? Thank you. Lennonmurdertruth.com, you've all seen the van. I'll bet you a dollar that John Lennon is more famous than Monterey, California. At one time, he was the most photographed and interesting human being on earth. When he was murdered, his assassination caused more suicides than any mass suicide event in history. Thousands of people killed themselves when John Lennon was killed, including the entire families. The real killer I've identified is author Stephen King. That's how sick your parents are, kids. They want to deny this. They want to punish you for making them work for you. Put a roof over your head. They're going to punish you with the man who killed John Lennon. Pretend he's not the man getting the autograph. Pretend I didn't find Mark David Chapman's name in a letter to the editor Lincoln Reagan. Pretend Stephen King doesn't write about it, shooting the man in the shoulder blades. Get the man's autograph and trying to kill him. Pretending, pretending, pretending. Parents, you know, you've got the greatest weather here in Monterey, but you don't have the greatest people. I guarantee you, I will be more famous in Monterey someday, too. And you don't want to be the people who jealously sidestep the duty to bring him forward with his evidence. You don't want to be that person because I hold grudges and I say what I think. And your property values will probably drop 20% if you don't wake up and acknowledge the fact that I'm a hero, not a wacko with evidence, not theory, that can prove Nixon and Reagan assassinated John Lennon because he was an outspoken peace activist, and they didn't want him in the way of their perpetual war machine. Leon Panetta was here earlier. I notice he's gone now, but I wanted to tell him to his face that he's on top of the pyramid here in all your politics, Monterey, this former CIA chief, former Defense Secretary, who giggled like an imbecile when he was recounting his exploits killing Iraqis on 60 Minutes. And he's corrupted your entire court system here. The system, the police gave me a phony ticket last two weeks ago for being in a loading zone with my commercially plated van on a Sunday. You ever heard of such a thing? And I just got in there. And the police here have committed legions of crimes against me. It's all going to come out when I'm more famous than Monterey, California. Steve Lightfoot here. Kids, your kids know I'm right. I'm getting a lot of people coming out of the woodworks giving me thumbs up lately, giving me smiles. Maybe they found out that I'll be leaving, going to Utah or something, but maybe they're just starting to get their heads on straight. But you better hurry up because March 1st is my birthday. And if I don't get support from Monterey, I'll be moving to Utah permanently. And it's cold over there, so I'll have to get used to it. But I'm not going to live with people who are not worthy of my evidence.
And with that, we'll go to our speakers online.
First is our telephone caller. Go ahead, please.
Yes, this is Nina Beatty. I request the city council send a letter to our members and leaders of Congress asking them to sponsor H R 10 218 to prohibit attack MS missiles to Ukraine. Despite the rising tension, our senators and representatives have taken no action to date. President Biden has brought everyone to the brink of nuclear war. He's now allowed American attack MS missiles to be fired into Russia using American personnel, American satellites, and American intel. Former UN Weapons Inspector Scott Ritter has talked with Russian officials. They view this as a direct US attack on Russia, putting the US in a state of war with Russia and triggering their nuclear doctrine. H R 10 218 is essential to calm this dangerous situation down. In addition, The Times of Israel also reports that Israel is preparing to attack Iranian nuclear sites. This is a very dangerous moment in world history, with a nuclear winter a real possibility. The National Press Club just hosted No Nuclear War, a call to reason with panels of experts moderated by Scott Ritter and Midia Benjamin of Code Pink. It's available on YouTube for more information. Please take action on this issue affecting every community everywhere. Secondly, as I previously have said, the Navy is destroying the historic forest on Del Monte Avenue at night, one tree or two at a time, when people don't see them in a slow attrition. They believe, I guess, that people won't notice or they won't care. I've contacted the Coastal Commission, who is following up with the Navy about this environmentally destructive action, eliminating habitat and promoting climate change. And I'm asking you, take action with your influence and stop this killing. Thank you.
And our next speaker is Peter. Peter, go ahead, please.
Thank you. I did not know I'd be speaking on such a momentous evening. Thank you all for your service. My name is Peter Behrge. As the Communications and Outreach Chair for Morca, the Monterey Off-Road Cycling Association, I am commenting on the old capital site planning process. In collaboration with land managers and local government, Morca has worked on behalf of all trail users since 2006. Our volunteers donate more than 1,000 hours of trail work annually. And the grants we receive help build trails, bridges, restrooms, and fund part-time employment. Bikes have been excluded from trail access in Monterey for as long as our trails have existed. Until someone in a position of authority takes a stand, this legacy discrimination will continue. The capital site, public input, and planning process has already been hijacked by those who oppose bikes. Since April, the most vocal opponents to bike access have been representatives of the N C I P. Coincidentally, do you know who funded the city's surveys and draft plan? The N C I P. This conflict of interest was undeniable when survey results were highlighted for the Parks and Rec commissioners. Those highlights told a very different story than the survey data itself. Survey one showed that next to walking and hiking, biking is the most popular activity among your constituents. Survey highlights admitted this entirely, instead casting bikes in a negative light by listing them on the activities or amenities not desired list. Only eight out of 221 survey responses identified bikes as not desired, but somehow that data point rose to the top. In survey two, despite cycling's popularity in survey one, bikes were not even listed as a possible answer to any questions. Responses in favor of bikes had to be written in, but still significantly outnumbered all other desired amenities. Where did bikes land on survey two highlights? Second to last, at six on a seven, list of seven desired activities or amenities. If this was publicized, our community would be outraged. After survey one, the draft plan shared April 23 did not include bikes. After survey two, the draft plan shared July 10 still did not include bikes. This omission was so glaring that two Parks and Rec commissioners questioned it. But the presenter brushed it off, saying bikes couldn't be given special treatment. This process has consistently downplayed cycling's popularity and overplayed inaccurate portrayals of mountain biking. That discrimination has tainted the city's assessment of bike amenities and led staff to focus on perceived obstacles rather than cycling's potential benefits. As leaders, you need to reset this process and give cyclists the voice and access we deserve. No group gets a monopoly on trail access. Cycling is more popular than ever, and mountain biking is the most popular among kids. Parks and Rec expertise is not in trail development. This has also hampered the assessment of mountain biking. Ironically, mountain biking has never had access to more funding and planning resources. Right now, 997 bike projects across the US are receiving federal funding. Those communities are capitalizing on resources while Monterey stalls out and fixates on costs and other obstacles. I'm asking the mayor for 15 minutes of his time so we can be assured this process is fact-based and fair. Thank you.
And we'll close public comment, bring it back to the council. Give me one second here. The the notes are a little off, but I'm going to try to go to the agenda. We're going to go to consent. Is there anything that anybody in the council wishes to pull? Okay, we'll open it up for general public comments on the consent items. Anybody in the chamber? And do we have anybody on Zoom? We'll do a countdown for folks to use a raise hand function to five, four, three, two, one. And there's nobody wanting to speak on the consent. So we'll bring it back to the council for motion and deliberation.
Move to approve consent agenda.
Second.
So it's moving second. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion passes unanimously. We're going to go ahead and adjourn to the Ocean View Community Services District meeting. Item number 15 is to receive Ocean View Community Service District report. We'll pass it to staff for presentation.
Good evening. There is nothing new to report.
Okay, dense. Okay, council, any questions? All right, opening up for public comment. Anybody in the chamber? We'll check online. We'll give folks countdown to five, four, three, two, one. We have nobody online, so we'll bring it back to the council. There's no action to take, so we'll go ahead and adjourn back to the city council meeting. Um, we have one public appearance item. Number 16 is to appoint council representatives to outside agencies and city boards and committees for 2025. Um, are there any questions from the council? Questions, comments, concerns? Is there a presentation? There is a presentation. All right.
So the presentation is essentially me sharing this spreadsheet with you and um hearing from you what you would like to do in terms of um appointments. And I do have the information on the previous year or this current year that's ending, if you would like that information.
Hans, did you the the updates that I sent?
No, I did not. That's my mistake. I did not send the updates to Clementine.
Okay.
I would suggest then we continue it.
Well, I'm just going to throw them out.
My apologies.
No, it's okay. I'm going to throw them out and then we can um. When is our next council meeting?
January 21st.
Just give me one second here.
Or we can continue to the evening and put it on the uh.
Perfect. All right, let's do that. All right, let's go ahead. If the council agrees, can we go ahead and continue this? Is there is?
Uh, we will, but we won't have Gino tonight.
Can he s- I don't know if you want to have anything to say. If we continue, can you speak on anything now if he has a desire to?
Um, I'd have to talk to him about why he's not going to be here and if we can do a teleconference or is that, is that what you're saying or?
Well, he's not going to be back. I'm since he's here now, I was wondering if he had a comment to share about that item while he's here.
I I would suggest um then to just start the item, start discussions, and then you can continue it.
Okay. So we'll go ahead and start. Um, we have to take out for public comment too, right? So let me just go to public. Um, anybody in the chamber wishes to speak on this item? All right, anybody on Zoom? We'll do a countdown to five, four, three, two, one. And there's nobody on Zoom, so we'll bring it back to the council. I didn't, I should have just asked you.
So question, I mean, are are you proposing changes on assignments?
Yes.
Okay, so we should hear what you're proposing.
Well, that's why we're going to bring it back in the evening. But if if Gino had some comments, I just wanted to put this, I I'm only bringing this up now because I just want, if Gino's not going to be here this afternoon, I wanted to make, or this evening, I wanted him to have an opportunity to share any thoughts that he might have. So that's, but we're going to talk about it tonight.
Okay, so I'm just a point of order. If you're suggesting changes, how do we talk about it now if we don't know what your suggested change?
We're not talking, we're going to talk about it this evening when when it's presented. Um, but I'm, the only reason why I'm opening it up for discussion right now is so that Gino can speak because he's not going to be here this evening. Does that make sense?
I think he can't speak to it if he doesn't know what the proposed changes are either.
Sure, I'm, all I'm saying is that there's, okay.
Right, so I.
Let's just go ahead and, let's just go ahead and continue it to the evening. Okay, is that good? Everybody good with that? Okay.
What, what, can I ask, um, so you, I mean, I'd, I'd like to be part of that conversation as well in terms of
Okay.
figuring out, you know, what my assignments are going to be. So what, what would be the best?
Hold on one second.
Move forward. I mean, I mean, I could also share some thoughts that I have in terms of my interests, but the the decision will come later, right?
We can discuss it all, Mayor. I mean, it's uh.
Hold on one second. I'm, I'm just going to give it to you.
Want to forward us that the document, we can pull it up on the screen and go through it.
It's pencil scratch stuff. Um, lem, I'll, I'll read it to you though. I'll, I'll read it out loud. If you want to pull up the blank version.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'm ready.
Um. It might be helpful to just start, I'm still trying to find it. It might be helpful to just maybe copy over what was originally there. So then we can kind of see the changes as I speak to them.
I think that's what she's got up there.
It's blank right now.
But what you'll have to um pretend that it's Alan is now Jean.
Yeah, if you just, yeah, that's fine. Yep, that's completely good.
Uh, do we have the screens? Are these on?
Yeah, they're on. Yours on? Yep. Oh, I'm searching for the wrong thing, that's why.
Now it's plugged in, but it's not coming on. Yeah, it's not, it's not like it's, like it doesn't have power, like it's lost its, like it's lost its power.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, they're all entered.
Oh, here it goes.
Okay, so this first switch is for 3CE. The proposal is to um make myself the alternate for that.
Oh. You're starting with, you're not starting at the top?
Oh, I'm just giving you the changes.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, who's the regular?
Um, uh, PG. We shared the seat with Pacific Grove, Carmel, and then the City of Monterey. The second is Community Human Services to Garcia.
As representative?
That's correct.
And keeping um Councilmember Garcia, sorry, keeping Councilmember Barber as alternate?
Um, that's correct.
Okay.
Uh, M1W alternate to Dr. Barber. The Chamber of Commerce from Garcia to Rash. TMC from Smith to Garcia. And that's it.
Um, that still leaves some of Councilmember Hoffes' seats uh. Unless you were having um Jean take those on.
That's correct.
Okay. So can I just clarify? So she would do, um, if in this scheme, she would do Ambag, Taxi Authority, Chamber of Commerce, and be alternate to MST?
That's correct.
Okay.
Do you have all three pages of this up or is it just the first page? Because on the third page, it has, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, on the third, there's two pages.
Oh, the one I got from online for from 2024 um had three, but it looks like this was condensed down. So the only thing that I would point out is that it shows that I'm on the Airport Land Use Commission, and I'm no longer on that.
Okay.
I'm now serving, and I can maybe message this to you afterwards for the details, but I'm on the um Restorative Justice Commission.
If you could send those details, that would be great. That particular section is for appointments that are done externally anyway, so we could just update it to whatever's correct.
Okay, so that is the proposal.
I'll put that part back on the screen.
Okay, so a point of uh question on the boards. You mentioned the Restorative Justice.
Restorative Justice.
Restorative Justice. So who's it run by? And is that something that we would list in here? Or is it a?
It's through the Mayor's Association. It's an appointment through the Mayor's Association.
Okay.
And so that's why it's really administrative. The council doesn't have any authority over making that appointment. So I think it's just more for public transparency to let them know what the council is sitting on as far as.
Understood, understood. Uh, to the second point, I'd like to know why you want to propose that I come off of TMC.
Um, so Gino doesn't have any um major appointments in outside agency. And there was a desire to do that when he first got onto the council, but because of his employer, there was a conflict of interest that existed there. So now that he has, um, he's, he no longer has that conflict. He was the one council member that I I reached out to because of his lack of um big outside appointment, and he had expressed interest in in wanting to do that.
Uh, well, I would pose an objection to it because I uh have been in good standing, uh appreciate it, have the time to serve, and have served in a variety capacities on TMC. As the uh former executive committee member, as the former chair of TMC, as uh one of the co-chairs for Measure X for Monterey County. Um, I'm very much embedded in the purpose cause and uh the activities of TMC. Have fully participated in all the events and fully participate as an active board member with a considerable amount of experience. So I think that brings a value to the city of Monterey and to the region, having served on Transportation Authority Monterey County. And we're in the middle of uh numerous uh agenda initiatives, funding, critical litigation. And I don't think this is the time to make a a move. And I just think that I bring a tremendous amount, a tremendous amount of service to that board and for the city. So I would like to remain.
Please. Uh, no, I can appreciate that and and respect the desire to remain on on that. Um, I I've been thinking about TMC in in terms of this context uh for a while and um, I mean, I I've been involved with the Transportation Agency for the, for the county um for some time now, also at at a uh local and regional level with with efforts. Um, more in the uh advocacy and and supporting projects all throughout. And um really, the interest um for me lies in having that opportunity to see what what you have seen and uh and be able to bring something to the table there. Um, just as you've described, I I'd like at some point to have that opportunity. And and I think um, I mean, maybe something that we can consider is um, and I think this, this is what we also do. At least I try to do with my assignments is that um I don't necessarily go into them um blindly or uh just uh with with my own opinion, right? I in in many instances, I collaborate to um you know, maybe understand the items better. So I would propose that maybe when, like you say, there are some initiatives that are in, it happening and you're in the midst of it. Um, I mean, I would welcome, you know, conversations so that as I go into those meetings, um, you know, I could bring also what you offer. Um, but also provide some of the background that I've, I think, had over the past, past few years as well. So but all in all, I, I mean, I'm, I would like the opportunity um to be a part of those conversations.
Being also that, I mean, I've been heavily involved in transportation projects for uh close to 10 years now.
Um, so real quick, why don't we check in with um Councilmember Rash real quick, just to
Right.
for for.
Point of clarification is does seniority have weight? Is there, is there an effort to get expertise in these committees? Or is there an effort to mix it up and it, it, that's the question.
So I I would have made this recommendation along with the other recommendations that I made during the installation of the last council. If Gino had capacity for it, but because there was a conflict with his employer, it precluded us from being able to do so. So um I don't think that there's any consistent methodology that's used in the appointment of the outside agency. It's to the outside agencies, it's, it's really um up to the discretion of the council. There is generally a sense that we try to keep the seats assigned to the person that might have had them. Um, but there has been occasions where where we've kind of switched them out.
Well, this is, this is the first thing I've had to comment on, and it it's a little uncomfortable to think that someone with seniority and continued interest would be asked to drop that if they didn't want to. I'm trying to imagine how I would feel had I had I served and maintained expertise. Unless, unless you say the desire of the council is to switch it up and in in another year, I'll have um CCCE and and we will, we will be switching them up on a regular basis so that we're all getting new experiences and new expertise. Um, if that's, if that'll be the pattern, then that should be the pattern. But if if you really do want expertise and and you expect to continue in the seats that you have, then then I think we should honor his, his seniority.
Um, let's go back to Ed and then we can go back to you.
Yeah, I, there's an alternate uh position. Uh, there's also, if Gino was in the alternate position for TMC. There may be times when I'm vacant. I think uh Ms. Barber filled in once this last year. But there's also uh as an alternate seat, no problems with attending the meeting. But there's also, uh, as an alternate seat, no problems with attending the meeting and get up to speed and see what TMC is doing. Uh, but as Jean has addressed, uh, 10 years of service on TMC, I'm, I'm taken back by, I'm not seeing what the justification is to remove me. You've explained that it's because now Gino is available. This is news to me. You didn't call. We had no conversation about this. No idea what you were planning on presenting. Uh, so I'm a little bit, uh, you know, surprised that this is the approach that you have. But, you know, obviously as we take a vote, I wouldn't vote for it. Uh, but I think that it's not the way, uh, that I would want to go because I'm deeply embedded in the activities of TMC and continue to serve and have served them for 10 years. Through transitions of Executive Director, through wild times and calm times. And, uh, I don't see that, uh, there's a big benefit in, uh, replacing me, uh, for, uh, making way for someone who has been on the council for two years, uh, who was a member of the, uh, the Bicycle Safety Committee on TMC. Uh, but that's much greater difference with being a board member, uh, serving in elected capacity with the lack of experience he has on the council yet. And I think that's why it would make sense to move him as an alternate. Leave me as the regular attending council appointed person. And as an alternate, he would certainly get an opportunity to get ramped up and get more knowledge and effectiveness on TMC's activities.
Point of clarification?
Oh, good.
Are these your appointments or you're insinuating that we're going to vote? I didn't even know that. I thought it was your appointment.
Yep. And yes.
Yep.
Um, so, so first of all, um, Ed, I mean, regardless of which direction that the, the council takes, I want to thank you for your years of service on, on TMC. This is no way in slights of you. The reason why I didn't reach out to you about this, which obviously it's awkward and uncomfortable. Um, but as I indicated earlier, I had already talked to Gino about this. And because of the Brown Act, I can only talk to one colleague about it, which precludes us from having a deeper conversation around the same item. So I apologize for whatever it's worth in regards to the, the feeling that, that it may elicit. It has nothing to do with you. It's more about making sure that we create balance for all the council members. Gino's the only council member, which is, in addition to the points that, the point that you raised around, um, having wanted to put Gino on from the get-go. Um, when he first came on and the conflict that existed there, that's no, that no longer exists. The fact that he doesn't have an appointment to any major outside agency, um, is, is a big part of that. So I'm trying to create balance to make sure that every council member has an appointment to a large outside agency so that we can create that balance amongst the council. Jean is going to have Ambag. Dr. Barber has, um, the Waste Management District. I have M one W. You have TMC and, and, um, MST. Those are all the, the larger outside agencies. Um, and so because you're the only one that has two, um, I felt it appropriate to offer to Gino who doesn't have any. That's, that, that was my justification for that. Please.
And, and I'll reiterate also that, Ed, this is nothing personal. Um, I mean, I, I know of TMC. I, I know their employees. I know their projects. And for me, it's been an area not only of interest, but of work for many years. So naturally I think from the list that we have, um, you know, I have an interest in sitting on that board. And this as an agenda item is my opportunity to express that, that interest, right? So, I mean, we're having the discussion and, um, I, I mean, I, my interest is, is pretty strong. And in terms of the expertise, um, if, if I don't sit on that board, right, when do I get that expertise, right? So that's part of the process, I think, where I'm not just coming in completely green. I am familiar with the agency. I am familiar with their work. Um, and that's why, having served in the Bike and Ped Committee and still serving on that committee, for me, it looks like and it feels like a natural progression to be serving on the board. Um, you know, at the will of the council.
So as I look through the list of assignments, the outside activities that Mayor Yu sit on are the Monterey County Fair.
She doesn't really meet.
Okay. Says two to three times a year as needed. So they're not, they're not meeting?
I've been doing it for two years. I've never been at, called to a meeting.
Monterey One.
Meet.
Uh, Monterey Peninsula Water Management District Policy Advisor.
Haven't, for two years have been on it, never been called.
Then why do we have them on the list?
If it's needed, that's what it's there for.
Okay. Uh, so I think I've, uh, I've spoken, uh, to, you know, my, my thinking, uh, you know, I just, I don't know, you could have handled it a different way. And it seems like, uh, your explanation, I understand the Brown Act. You could have included me. It seems like someone who's already on the position who's being proposed by you to be removed from the position almost has greater weight than the one that you're thinking of making the appointment for. So it's last minute. I've said my piece. I think I should remain on TMC. Uh, and I would propose that Gino be selected as an alternate to TMC. Um, and I just think that those, those, uh, that's my feeling and that's my thinking.
So what do you have to say to my argument around trying to create equity along the lines of the major outside agencies? You're the only council member that has two. Gino has zero. So what do you say to that? You say make him an alternate, but he, he does, he's not the primary on any outside agency for the major, for the major ones.
Well, part of the reason why I wound up with so many at one time was I was more available because my time is something that I'm able to flex because I'm self-employed.
Well, with all due respect, that's not my question. My question was, how, how do you justify an argument of keeping Gino at zero and you at two? And you being the only one on the council with two?
Uh, so if we're, if you're asking me, because I have two major outside agencies, uh, Gina, would you be interested in MST? That meets on, once a month on a Monday?
Yeah, you know, I thought about it as well, but I, I think, you know, what I have shared with you is that really my interest lies in TMC because of the involvement that I've had professionally with them. I haven't had that kind of involvement with MST. Yeah, we've had some collaborations, but not to the extent of TMC. TMC is, I mean, I've been serving on the Bike and Ped Committee even before I even considered uh, applying for the appointment. This goes back years, right? So the interest there I think is, is more solid in TMC. And that's, that's what I would prefer.
And I took MST when Dan Albert was no longer on the council. He was representing MST. And I took MST because it was a conflict with some of the others in schedules. And I was able to do MST and pick that up the last two years. Uh, I would say that as far as the hierarchy, TMC would be my priority. And I think that in answer to your question to give Gino something, I would say MST would be an opportunity. And leave me on TMC.
Okay. We go checking with Councilmember Rash to see if she has any additional thoughts.
I want to honor, um, Councilmember Garcia that, that you want the experience. That's, that's great. But I'm uncomfortable sitting here thinking that because somebody wants an assignment, that trumps the person that has it, who doesn't want to surrender it. Un, unless we're establishing a precedent where we're all going to switch on a regular basis and that we're going to get expertise in different areas. So I'm in support of Councilmember Smith staying where he is because he wants to continue it. And he's had the expertise and I, I think the offer of going to the Monterey Salinas Transit is, and personally I think that was creative and, and gracious and, and it would help you personally. And it's in the line of your expertise. So to me, to me, that's the answer, but, um.
Can I, can I ask maybe both of you to both Councilmember Smith and Councilmember Garcia to describe maybe what your vision is in your role as a board member for TMC? Um, whoever wants to start?
So, um, I have pretty continuous conversations with, uh, uh, TMC staff, uh, planners, engineers. Um, and I, I have those conversations in the context of the projects that are currently happening throughout the region. And, um, I think, um, it's something that, that the agency, um, and, and this is my opinion, something that the agency has, uh, struggled with is, um, uh, you know, creating that, um, then those, those spaces for, uh, continued, uh, advocacy for their projects. And, and it's, this is not a, a criticism. It's more of, you know, what, what that world is, is the transportation world is like in that, um, you know, the agency tries to create, um, projects that hopefully will have a, a positive impact on our communities. Um, but many times that communication or that educational component, um, for whatever reason, uh, doesn't necessarily land on the community. And, and we have communities that many times don't really understand the, um, the, uh, the intention of the projects, the importance of the projects and, and understand really, um, the logic of the projects. So that's something that, uh, I hope to bring to the table in, I mean, having been in transportation planning for almost 10 years, uh, I'm hoping to bring that perspective of understanding the challenges, uh, from the agency side, but also communicating, um, the concerns and sometimes frustrations and, and, um, maybe confusion that communities have when massive projects come forward.
Can I, can I ask a clarifying question? Cause it was kind of maybe more than, which I was going, and I appreciate this because I know this to be true about you, that you're really big on community engagement and trying to draw in people that aren't, that aren't, um, typically engaged. I think where my question's more going is TMC as an agency is responsible for transportation efforts throughout Monterey County. So in, in regards to the actual type of projects that are done and the focus of that agency and, and where are your values in regards to like the type of infrastructure projects that we need to be focusing on within our region? As it relates to your role.
Right.
Potentially on, on.
So, so specifically for the city of Monterey, and we've had conversations about the, or discussions on, uh, on council that, um, there is, uh, I think a thirst in our city and, uh, uh, support for infrastructure that, um, you know, um, addresses issues with congestion and, and the amount of vehicles that we get through our region, but speaking specifically the city of Monterey. And then there's, uh, there's, uh, there's that interest for, uh, folks to, or, or our city to have, um, that infrastructure that moves us a little bit away from cars, not completely, but a little bit away. Um, for others who have that interest in, uh, alternative, uh, alternate modes of transportation, like bicycles, like e-bikes. Um, you name it, anything else that's other than, than cars. So, um, I think that I could also bring to the board that advocacy, right? Where, uh, again, we, we have those conversations and, and, um, um, I, I can bring to the table also perspectives from the community of why, you know, the, the frustration, right? The communities feel, and we're talking about city of Monterey. And, you know, as in, in, in its entirety, um, the frustrations of maybe not having that kind of infrastructure currently and why that is, right? And, and why is it that our communities sometimes don't advocate for those projects? So, I mean, that's, like, is that?
Yep, that's good.
No.
That's ours, Smith.
Um, well, my perspective of TMC's role is slightly, slightly a little bit larger than that. That's one perspective. Uh, it sounds like you're talking about from a planning perspective and your time served on the Subcommittee of Bicycle Safety, uh, can't speak against that. But the purpose of TMC is, uh, to coordinate across all of the cities in the county of Monterey to sponsor and advocate for major projects that are partnered with frequently Caltrans, uh, frequently mixing the dollars betw- between local funding and Measure X. Uh, sponsored as, as an example, coming out of, uh, a need in a community. Uh, about two years ago, we started to hear from some groups in South County. And it was related to the lack of safety along Highway 101. With that initiative that was coming out of a neighborhood group in South County, that turned into a major initiative for multi-million dollar improvement of South County, uh, from Spreeco South, uh, to de-conflict crossovers and, um, access points to 101 because we had had multiple fatalities as a result of that. TMC reaching out to South Counties in Salinas and to Spreeco's and to Caltrans with a variety of initiative. The board supported acting on an initiative to fund and reach out and apply for multiple grants at state and federal level to appropriate the money for EIR study and design and planning phase. So we are currently in the planning phase for Southbound 101, uh, that will be executed and constructed by 2030 to 2035. So many of the projects are long range. Almost all the projects touch each of the cities. And the board of TMC is represented by every single city in the county of Monterey, plus all five board supervisors members. It's comprised of five different members of outside agencies that are, they are participants in our board as a non-voting members advisory, such as the airport, the college. Um, and our move to answer the problems of transportation challenges in each one of the communities takes on a life of its own, depending on the community. It's set by the community and their priorities, frequently by a council, frequently by, uh, horrific things that occur. And our job is to partner with that city and see if we can come up with some solutions. Frequently the city is underfunded, uh, has little interest in taking on the education component that Gino spoke of. And that is a role that TMC takes on actively with an outreach, education. And sometimes those projects with a staff of 18 on TMC has to be a role of a contract for outreach. Uh, there is a variety of things that are required with, as we have to do with SEQA, uh, with community outreach and planning. And a big part of my role, as I see it, is to, uh, be an active member of TMC to look out for the stakeholders in Monterey as well as the county. for the stakeholders in Monterey as well as the county, and to make sure that they're getting professional service delivery that enhances public safety and improves transportation in every city. So there's a crossover in interests that I have a great interest in providing projects to bring safety to South County and deflect the hazards on Highway 101. Or pedestrian traffic that we want to improve, such as Fortag, which I served on the Subcommittee to raise a whole lot of money and get that passage with three other co-chairs, and Fortag passed. And that project is just under construction with the tunnel that goes under 218 in Delray Oaks. Many projects that I've been a part of, that helped identify, worked on, are still underway. And it would be a shame for me to have to leave at this point with projects such as Fortag that are underway. I think my experience in advocacy for the entire community of Monterey, as well as every city in the county of Monterey, speaks clearly. If you ask other members of TMC, I don't think I've ever failed. I don't think I've ever shown up not prepared. And my heart's always been in the game. My heart's still in the game, and I still care greatly about TMC. I see it also as a big part of a board member, as we have to look at the numbers. We have to be in a position to question board's presentations, the board's funding sources, the details in these huge projects. And staff does an outstanding job. But I think every board member has a duty and responsibility to be a watchdog for the people's taxpayer paying money. And I serve that well. I've been instrumental in many of the projects, as many board members are, they're not unanimous. We have heated conversations that require a lot of historical pieces, a lot of the moving parts from not just the one agenda item that's brought to us. However, many of the projects go back several years, which necessitate having a strong history of the process, the projects, the community, and have those relationships among the other 16 members of the board. So my perspective is to be holistic in the approach, serving the city of Monterey first and serving the rest of the cities in the county of Monterey, to make sure that they have an active, vibrant agency that serves them. But each city is ultimately responsible for their own transportation system, their own outreach, but we partner with them frequently. And if there's a city that doesn't do it very well, TMC's pretty good about coming alongside and helping them. And there's a certain statutory requirement and an element of this that when we have Measure X and it's passed by the city and all county voters, we have statutory requirements to the performance in the process, the funding source, and the way we pass the initiatives to spend the money that TMC has, has a strong statutory requirement to it and also has an oversight board. So the role of the board member is also to be aware of what the statutory requirements are in the execution of large projects such as Fortag. And for that, I would count myself as one of the experts.
Thank you. Thank you both for engaging the question there. I mean, it is a tough dynamic that exists within this because I do fully respect your history and time serving in the role. But then also trying to find a way of getting Gino plugged in, and I appreciated you providing an alternative. When I think about the appointments and when we're in this kind of conflicting space, I think the thing that I fall back to at the end of the day are, where are my values? And what is, are they consistent with what I am trying to push forward through an extension of one of my colleagues being on that board? And which is why I asked you both to describe what that looks like. And, you know, I do feel and get a sense, and I think it's a little bit affirmed through the responses, that Gino is expressing a view and perspective that is more forward-leaning, that is about bringing new voices to the table that aren't traditionally involved, which is consistent with who I am and how I run the city as mayor. And so I think there's a lot of technicality in regards to the vision that you articulated. I think the one thing that kind of like helped identify what I feel I know to be true in regards to just the difference in our values you were describing, you know, if there's an issue that occurs, you know, we'll work with the jurisdiction and the TMC will work with the jurisdiction and trying to address the issue. And it just kind of, to me, it expresses a more of wait and see, let's kind of go with the flow, you know, as opposed to, I think, more proactive and kind of leaning out in front and trying to push for the initiatives. So for those reasons, I support Gino going on TMC. It looks like we're at a logger jam here. If I could just take a pause on this one and just ask, are there questions, concerns around any of the other appointments? Because this one has kind of taken the oxygen out of the room.
The only question I'd have is, Gene was, I mean, it was put up there quickly. Gene, did you have any questions on the proposal for your assignments? Any conflicts in time, dates?
Oh, I can, I can make them work. I was looking forward to the CCCE, but I'll yield to the mayor. You know, I'm the rookie, so I expect actually to be treated as a rookie. So I'll fit in where I can serve.
I want to give you feedback on something you said, and you're entitled to your opinion and, you know, suggesting that Gino should get that nod. But my comment about the advocacy or your perception that there's a lack of advocacy or lack of modern thinking of my approach to my duty at TMC's board, I'm not quite sure, well, I don't agree with it, but I'm not quite sure where that comes from. Because the advocacy isn't so much of a challenge on the board as a board member. The challenge comes from the capacity of our TMC staff to be able to take on, on occasion, what might be perceived as the traditional role of the city. And I don't think any city would want TMC to come rushing in or having a board member, you know, push or all of a sudden make it part of TMC's work plan without coordinating closely with that particular city. And there's a lot of coordination that goes on with each one of the cities on any projects, grants, partnerships. And it's a big machine, and many of the projects are very large, long-term, many years, and partnering with the California Department of Transportation. So by my comments, I don't want you to believe that there isn't advocacy, nor is there no help offering to any city. But it's a touchy subject when you are expecting board members to take a role of advocacy and advocate for particular projects in a particular city. As a board member, that's not necessarily our role, but our role is to support projects and certainly have the opening to be able to have communications with the members wherever they are, by email, by meetings, by conversations, by text and phone. And that happens all the time. As my role at TMC, I get emails and conversations all the time from residents that come from every city, not just Monterey. And that's a good thing. And I think that that's an effective board member who then can advocate for the right projects with TMC. But each city gets 60% of Measure X to do with those projects the way they choose to. TMC is funded with the 40% of Measure X and state and federal grants that sometimes are passed through, but it's a well-functioning small agency that cannot function without outside engineers, outside contractors, and outside project managers. But there's a lot of advocacy that goes on, and people know me throughout the county and very approachable in that regard.
So that doesn't really quite capture, I think, my comments, but for the sake of brevity, I don't know if we're, I don't know if anybody's moving in regards to this. So that being said, I'm just going to go ahead and try to make a motion that we accept the recommended changes that I made that are about to be on the screen.
We'll pause here to just make sure we got everything transferred over.
And I wanted to point out, for Central Coast Community Energy, we actually have the primary seat beginning in January for two years, so that is no longer going to be the alternate seat.
Perfect.
I'll go ahead in a second.
Could you say that one more time? I didn't quite hear that.
Yes, we're on a rotation with the Cities of Carmel and Pacific Grove, and this upcoming two-year term will be Monterey having the primary seat. So earlier I typed in last year's, but that was when we were alternates, and this next year we'll start being primary for two years.
Okay. And I can't see, my screen for some reason is very faint, I can't really see much on this screen. So Central Coast Community, I can't read when it meets.
It meets four times per year and as scheduled is what I know of that one. Hans, were you attending that one?
On the operations board, we meet monthly, but I don't know, the policy board might meet every quarter.
So it's four times a year? Okay. I don't have any other questions.
Was there a second?
Yeah, I second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No?
No.
Okay. So is there an alternative motion?
I'll make the alternative motion that the list be adopted with the exception of Smith remains at TMC and that Gino is assigned to MST.
Is there a second?
Can I make a friendly amendment?
You would, you would just let the motion die and you'd make your own motion since it hasn't been seconded?
Let me amend my motion, if I may, since it hasn't been seconded, that I would, on this list, recommend Smith stay at TMC, but Smith would avail MST's assignment should Gino accept that.
I, I'm foreseeing what's going to happen here, but if MST was offered for you, would you take it?
Somebody has to second it. No, all right.
But then we can have discussion.
Just more of discussion.
So if we have a second, we can discuss.
I think we're just, did you make, was that a motion?
My motion was to keep Smith at TMC and to offer MST for Mr. Garcia.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
All right. Gino?
Can I see that beat up again?
Your mouth.
Mike.
Mike.
Can I see the list again?
Please.
My only change would be to move Councilmember Garcia to the alternate of TMC, or is that what we're saying with the motion?
I would be okay with that as an alternate, but.
Right. Yeah.
So is that like a friendly amendment that you want to make to the motion?
Mm-hmm.
Do you accept that?
I would accept that to put Garcia as alternate to TMC.
So, so can you repeat the motion?
The motion would be Smith would remain at TMC. You would be assigned as the alternate.
Right.
And then we would ask that you would take MST's Monday meeting. And just so you're aware, that's a nine o'clock meeting three times a year and a 10 o'clock meeting once a month that goes till 12:30. First Monday of the, or second Monday of the month.
And I'd be his alternate.
And that was seconded, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And we're in discussion.
Mm-hmm. So, I mean, my interest was, and still is with TMC, so with this motion, I'd be assigned to another board and also as an alternate, right? So basically two, two more assignments. I'd rather remain as an alternate for TMC and not MST. So is that, do I need to?
If you would like, you can make a friendly amendment to his motion.
Right. Okay. So I think I want to go down that path. I would make a friendly emotion, friendly motion to remain as an alternate for TMC or rather be an alternate for TMC, and then MST would be open.
Is that acceptable by the motion maker?
Yes, I'm the one that has to approve of that, correct?
That's correct.
At some time? Yes, I would accept that friendly motion.
And then.
But the second.
Does that work for you?
That works fine, and I'd be willing to lead MST unless someone with more, what I call seniority, wants it.
If you, if you want it because you have the time and there's, in your overall schedule, you feel like you want the capacity to take something else.
Mm-hmm. Or we can continue shifting things around till we're happy.
So is that another friendly amendment to the motion? Because right now you're the alternate to MST, but you're, what you're saying is to become the primary?
Unless somebody else strongly wants it.
Well, I mean, I do strongly want it, but I want TMC stronger.
Mm-hmm.
But MST is still important to me as well.
You can keep it. I'm fine. I, I feel those that are serving, who are happy, deserve the honor and of continuing. And I think there's a, there's going to be natural progressions where, where council people come and go and, and you rise to your continuing level of interest. So I'm fine with you keeping MST if you want it.
Okay. And you're listed as the alternate, correct?
That'd be great.
Gino, are you supportive of the motion?
The motion being, sorry, just getting a little late.
That you would be the alternate for TMC and and that MST stays as it currently is prior to my recommendation?
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Nearly painless. Nearly painless. All right. We got there. All right, we're going to go ahead and recess to close, I'm sorry, there's no closed session. We're going to recess and reconvene at 7:00 PM, so hope to see you all. Everybody has to come back, it's a requirement. Nearly painless. Alright, we got there. Alright, we're going to go ahead and recess to close, uh, I'm sorry, there's no closed session. We're going to recess and reconvene at seven PM. So hope to see you all. Everybody has to come back. It's a requirement.
Boarding in progress.
Hello everybody. For those that have returned, welcome back. For those that are just now joining us, we're going to enter our evening session for this council meeting Tuesday, December 17th, 2024. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And I will ask Councilmember Rash to lead us off.
Finally.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With that, we'll go ahead and continue general public comments, bringing up items not on today's agenda. Anybody in the chamber wish to speak for general public comment?
We'll go online. Anybody on Zoom? I'll do a countdown to five, four, three, two, one. And we have one person online. Let's go to that caller.
Mr. Rosen, go ahead please.
Hello Mayor Williamson and City Council. I wanted to start by responding to what Mayor Williamson said. The last time I commented when I mentioned how we needed to prioritize, you know, spending all that money on fancy banquet chairs and taking away free parking. And his response was Monterey is a full-service city. In other words, serving everybody. Well, I think we need to change the priorities because the people with money are getting a lot of service, but the poor aren't getting enough and they're having an awfully hard time. And I think we just have to prioritize Mayor Williamson. So, you know, when you're taking, there's a lot of people that live in their cars and when you're taking away free parking, I understand you have things to pay for, but it hurts those people a lot. And it's not good, you know, so I get tired of hearing all this equity talk and diversity and inclusion because it's fake. It's Orwellian. The city is making it harder and harder for people without money. You know, it's a tough world if you don't have money. And I just am so sad that the city also want to talk about the big trees that were cut down. I'm sorry, the city manager likes to cut down. The hands like to cut down big cypress trees to make more room for parking or make it easier to clean up. And fishermen's work parking lot, but these trees are precious. They're spiritual. I would recommend trying to give a hug to one of them. Instead of cutting them down, at least open up the public input and put a notice up, but don't just sneak the trees down. All of a sudden we see them cut down. And that's not a good thing to leave the public out of it because the public values their trees. And just suddenly one day. And just suddenly, one day, we see the magnificent heritage sick marquee cut down by the museum without public input. Maybe there was a way it didn't have to be taken down. So I would like to see the city, please, start looking out for the weakest of all in this society. You know, maybe we need to start converting hotel rooms for housing. The rich, they can buy a sprinter or whatever, you know. We have people in real need who are freezing cold in the wintertime, and there's so much more all of you could do. And I'm so sorry. And then we have the Gaza situation with a genocide going on. I wish you would do, make a sister city in Palestine. Palestine, I call it because that's what it is in my mind, as much as Israel. And I would, you would do a resolution against that because it's wrong. And so I guess we have it pretty good. Our military industrial complex is going all over the world as Martin Luther King. Mayor Williamson, why don't you read Martin? Listen to Martin Luther King's speech, The Three Evils of Society. Find out about the military industrial complex. See his speech beyond Vietnam. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and close public comment. And we'll move to our public appearance item number 17, Improve the Americans with Disabilities Act Transition Plan 2024 Update. And with that, I'll pass it to Hans for staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our Assistant City Manager, Nedro Ternaschisera, will present the report and give you a brief presentation of 41 slides.
Thank you so much, Hans. I appreciate you announcing how many slides I'll be presenting to you all today. Let me get to share the screen here and thank you again in all seriousness, Hans, for the introduction. What we have before you today is the Americans with Disabilities Act 2024 Transition Plan. And wanted to first thank the residents for their feedback early in this years-long process and as well as staff from our engineering team, building, maintenance, and other divisions that helped put this together. And also as part of the team were our consultants, Jensen Hughes. And we had Jasper Kirsch, who's joining us remotely. He's here to answer any questions that staff may not be able to answer, as well as Joshua Clip, both from the Jensen Hughes team, are joining us virtually this evening. First, I wanted to start off by sharing why ADA is so important to us. We not only have a legal obligation, I believe, but also a moral one. You know, some of you may have had family members who've been affected by a disability and recognize the struggle of mobility in public places. You know, my late father-in-law, in his later years, relied on a wheelchair to get around and had challenges getting around to doctor's offices, pharmacies, grocery stores, and that wasn't easy. And I know many of you have experienced that. Roughly 19% of the American population have some type of a disability, whether that's difficulty seeing, are blind or unable to see, difficulty hearing, or have difficulty walking or climbing stairs. The ADA started with a, and before the ADA was adopted, was a report to the President and to the Congress of the United States from the National Council on Disability. And there was a report titled Towards Independence: An Assessment of Federal Laws and Programs Affecting Persons with Disabilities. And these were legislative recommendations that very much brought disability rights into the American consciousness. That was in 1986. In 1990, the ADA became a civil rights law that prohibited discrimination against individuals with disabilities in all areas of public life, including jobs, schools, transportation, and all public and private places that are open to the general public. It was signed into law on July 26, 1990, by President George Herbert Walker Bush on a ceremony on the south lawn of the White House, as you can see here. And the intent of the ADA is to remove physical or policy-related accessibility barriers to ensure that people with disabilities have the ability to participate and access the full range of elements and participation within American life. And the ADA requires that local governments, that include the city of Monterey, take certain affirmative steps to ensure appropriate access for qualified persons with disabilities in place. Titles 1 through 4 became law in 1991. Title 1 of the ADA covers employment. Title 2 focuses on states and local governments like the city of Monterey. Title 3 on public accommodations, and Title 4 on telecommunications. And it continues to evolve, right? Just yesterday, Secretary Pete Buttigieg announced that rights for Americans with disabilities will expand, including a final rule that the biggest expansion of rights for passengers with disabilities, and this is the biggest expansion of rights in a generation. We're just announced yesterday sweeping sweeping protections for airline passengers. We're going to be focusing today on the ADA as it relates to the city of Monterey and how ADA prohibits discrimination on the basis of disability in all the services, programs, and activities that we provide here in the city. It's a comprehensive list of what's covered under ADA. That includes structures, facilities, activities, programs, and policies. Everything from events to access to parks, access to our sidewalks and streets. So the city of Monterey, we previously completed what's known as the Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan, first in 1994. In 2013, the city completed the more recent ADA Transition Plan update, where we identified 34 buildings, 27 parks, 27 and 22 parking lots and structures, and roughly 1,150 curb ramps and 300 pedestrian signals in need of improvements to meet federal and state accessibility standards. Since then, the city has made positive progress towards the recommended changes. The purpose of this 2024 update is to identify and update any gaps in the prior plan and incorporate incremental changes in accessibility regulations and/or policy and structure that may have occurred in the prior decade. So this process included an investigation and documented review of the city's policies, programs, services, and activities. And it also identified gaps to where we are today. So the existing transition plan was updated to include updated scheduling and budgeting information for barrier removal and document previously identified items that have since been corrected. And that's why we're here, asking council to adopt the 2024 plan. So how have we made progress over the last decade? We've made over 90 ADA-related infrastructure project improvements totaling about $28 million. That includes 68 projects, such as curb ramps, sidewalk, and pedestrian signals totaling 24.3 million. Here are some examples of what we've done over the last decade. Here's an example of crosswalk and ramps at the corner of Sloane Avenue and Fifth Street. We upgrade crosswalk and ramps throughout the city. This one is a photo of before and after of Aguahito and Third Street. Crosswalk and ramps at Prescott Avenue in Canary Row. You can see here, there's specific specifications as it relates to the curb ramps and how it's designed. There's also improvements to buildings and city facilities. The sports center, Colton Hall, council chambers, the dry boat storage facility totaling 2 million. Here's an example of the elevator at Colton Hall that was done. The lift right here outside of the council chambers to ensure access. The ramp down to the planning office from Dutra Street. Seven parking lot projects, also including the breakwater lot downtown West Garage waterfront parking lot, all totaling $600,000. Here's a photo recently of the Veterans Park West Parking Lot Access upgrades. The crumbled parking lot there and then the ADA parking spaces. Seven other parks projects, including Schulte Park, Veterans Park, Cypress, and Dennis the Menace Park totaled 1.1 million. Here are some photos of Schulte Park Center access. So the goal of the 2024 self-evaluation brought us to examine some of the program services and activities that the city does provide and ensures that they're accessible to people with disabilities. And it also identified where changes are needed. We had a public engagement process. Here's a screenshot of the Have Your Say Monterey page when we launched this effort. We had a town hall meeting, actually a combination of town hall meetings, both on Zoom and here in the city council chambers. And the Self-Evaluation Implementation Plan identified 13 key areas. I won't read each of them, but they range from the plan itself to policies, auxiliary aids, emergency management, disability awareness, HR and disability civil rights, guidance and training for city staff. This is the programmatic side and the services side of ADA. And there's a summary and recommendations based on a staff survey and the consultant analysis that are part of the 6,000-page report that is in your packet tonight. And we're making good progress, and we've begun implementing some of the recommendations. Here's a screen grab of a project tracking sheet that our graduate intern from the Middlebury Institute, Maya Wong, who's here in the audience with us, will be working on with staff to implement the recommendations using a tracking system. The goal of the 2024 Transition Plan is to inspect and analyze the built environment and see where there are gaps. And the four requirements included identifying the obstacles, describing how those facilities will be made accessible, specifying the schedule to achieve compliance, and that's an important one, and then also indicate who's responsible to implement the plan. The, what's called the ACSR, the Access Compliance Survey Reports, covers city properties and facilities. We have them divided into three different categories. One is building and facilities, two is parks, third is parking lots. And then also public rights of way, right? Curb ramps and then pedestrian signals. The 2013 Plan Update covered 36 buildings, 27 parks, 22 parking lots and structures. The 2024 Plan includes an update to review completed projects, some of the newly identified buildings and areas surveyed. It includes leased facilities as well. And also, the surveys included the 1,189 curb ramp and islands and 318 pedestrian signals. Some of the features that were surveyed included the routes to and from site arrival points to the building entrances, building entrances and exits, and then for city-owned and operated facilities, the circulation within the building, routes and corridors, public use in common areas, work areas, and assembly spaces. Next year, we'll be conducting a detailed analysis of the interior and exterior circulation for all of the leased facilities as well. Outdoor activity areas such as athletic fields, pools, and playgrounds were also included as part of this update. So here are our findings. There are still 5,438 identified barriers, 679 barriers that have been remedied or closed. And the city spent over $2 million addressing those, but there's still remaining open items. So as of 2024, we have 4,759 remaining open items for a cost of $1, 19.579 million. $8.9 million for buildings, $1.8 million for parking facilities, and $8.8 million for parks. Still very significant and quite high price tags. On the curb ramp side, we have, we surveyed 1,189 ramps, 270 ramps were closed. We still have $4.6 million roughly in curb ramps to go. And that, I'm sorry, we spent roughly $4.6 million, and we have $15.4 million to go with 919 open items. And then on the pedestrian signal side, 318 push buttons, closed 56 items, spent roughly $2.7 million to remediate them, and still have $14.9 million to go with 262 remaining open items. The grand total estimate is, it's a big number here. Almost $50 million is what we estimate is still outstanding in terms of ADA improvements that need to be completed. So how do we prioritize the barrier mitigation on the programmatic side? And it's based on the importance of program function, the frequency of use, and also the program location. So how do we prioritize those $50 million in needs? And a lot of that is based on the four priorities listed before you here. Public access, how hazardous are the conditions? Two is access to the program function areas. The third is to some of the common areas to support the program function, so restrooms, drinking fountains, public telephones, et cetera. And then the fourth is some of the other barriers that aren't included in the three priorities above. The criteria for the public right-of-way areas are high priorities for the pedestrian routes serving state and local government offices and facilities. The second priority, the medium-high priority for ped routes serving important transportation corridors, including pathways leading to schools. The third priority, focus on pedestrian routes serving commercial and business zones and other Title III entities. And the fourth is pedestrian routes serving residential neighborhoods and some of the undeveloped areas within the city. Again, these cost estimates are based on our consultant's experience. It's reviewed by staff, and it's based on the construction and project work here in the Monterey Peninsula that tends to be more expensive than other areas like the Central Valley. And these are cost estimates that we know will vary and will be determined once each project is scoped and bidded. But it is an estimate of $49.978 million. $30.4 million in curb ramps and pedestrian signals. Because we have Measure P and S that allows for funding for some of these purposes, the goal is to utilize Measure P and S where possible to address curb ramp and head signals. When it comes to parking facilities, the idea is to utilize parking funds where we can to make those improvements. $1.8 million. And this is the hardest part, is the city facilities and parks. $17.73 million. We list here NCIP and other funds because there are limited funds available to address this important need to update city facilities. We have only very little, as many of you know, that we set aside from the general fund into the capital improvement program towards these ADA improvements. And one of the few sources of revenue where we are able to prioritize funding for, both from the council and getting feedback from the community and the NCIP committee, is the NCIP itself. So that is one area where there's a potential funding opportunity. Measure P and S has funded ADA improvements. When you look at citywide sidewalks, phases 1 through 7, ADA signalized intersections, phases 1 and 2, as well as 32 curb ramp improvement projects. Those have been past examples in the past 10 years where we've utilized Measure P and S funding. And there is a whole host of other ADA improvements that our community has agreed should be funded and has been funded by NCIP. Franklin Street and Markin Street, Aguahito 10th Street sidewalk ramps, bull bouts at Prescott and Parcel Street, Elk Run and Deer Forest Drive bull bouts, ADA access to the tot lot, the Schulte Park Wall and ADA Phase 2 project, Veterans Park Parking Lot, Colton Hall upgrades, the Canary Row Crosswalk Safety Project, and Schulte Park Streetscape improvements are just some of the few, some of the many NCIP projects that have been, that have helped support ADA improvements in the city of Monterey. And then, of course, the parking fund, as you see here, not only surface lots, but also parking garages. We wanted to highlight what are the costs if we continue to delay. We've made a lot of progress, but there's still quite a bit of progress to go. The $50 million is quite a significant number, given our limited city budget. Now, if you take the last three years and recognizing that, you know, maybe 10.7% average per year over the past three years may be an outlier, but it is the average increase over the last three years. This shows us how much these costs will rise if we don't make any investments towards ADA improvements, right? So the $50 million this year turns into $61.2 million in two years, $90.92 million in 2030, and $138 million in 2034. So it's important that we continue to chip away at these improvements. And that's why we've developed a schedule before you tonight. And part of that preliminary schedule, this just shows you some of the, and we call it preliminary because you're not making any formal decisions tonight in terms of allocating funds or allocating funding from a certain fund to these projects, but it's a preliminary schedule that's required to be included in the ADA by law. And so there's the sports center and library in Schulte Park Center, and these are, this shows you the number of barriers and the cost estimates based on this year's estimates. We're hoping to tackle this in 2025-26 fiscal year. Here are the projects that we're hoping to tackle in '26-'27. Alastero Park Complex, $1.3 million in required ADA improvements in that facility. $309,000 at Alastero Park Center building alone, right? Fire Station 11, $209,000. And many of these address points of travel between parking areas and, let's say, in the park, Alastero Park Center, as an example, picnic grounds, access to the skate park, access from the former French consulate to the restrooms. These are just some of the many improvements that are needed. When you look at many of these building facilities and why it's such a high price tag, it's because many of these require complete overhaul and renovation of restrooms in many of our city facilities. 28, 29, looking at Old Monterey Jail in Colton Hall, the police and fire annex. And in 2930, the city hall complex here, $1.1 million in improvements that are needed for curb And in 2930, the city hall complex here, $1.1 million in improvements that are needed for curb ramps, better access paths of travel. And this is a reminder to, to counsel that the ADA transition plan is truly a living document. It is intended to be updated on an ongoing basis as policies change, as improvements are made. We're making improvements right now at, at Pacific Street here and, and Polk Street and Hartnell. And, and those are examples of improvements that are incrementally and continually making progress towards ADA improvements. And we'll be continuing to update our database as we go to show that we're, we're making, making these legally required improvements. So your recommendation tonight is to approve the ADA transition plan 2024 by minute action. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have tonight.
Thank you, Nat, for the good presentation. Counsel, other questions? Does anybody want to lead us off?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions, if I may. So it's been since 2013 that we've updated this. In between 2013 and as this gets published, what's the federal agency or state agencies that we report to? Cause I'm certain that there is other agencies that want to measure and see. If you could address that. And then also other sources and funding opportunities through grants. I'd like to hear a little bit more about that.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. The first is there's no formal submittal of the document, if you will. This is, all local governments are required by Title, Title II of ADA to have a transition plan and a self-evaluation plan, but there's no, no formal process. It's, it is a federal document and, or a, you know, federal law. There's the access, the access board at the federal level, we refer to that. But we're not formally submitting this with a letterhead to a federal or state agency now. You know, we're, but we are required to maintain it.
Okay, okay, great.
Yeah. And in terms of the grants, and it's a, it's a great question is there are limited funds for ADA specific improvements when it comes to state and federal grants. All local governments are required to maintain accessible routes and maintain these improvements. So the very few grants that we receive are, might be focused on project specific. The last time we've received a grant that we used for ADA was many years ago and it was Prop 68. And this was the, the park and recreation proposition that was, that was funded statewide. We received a per capita allocation of just under $200,000. And we use those towards ADA improvements in parks. But candidly, they're, they're far and few between. One of the challenges that we have with state grants is that as the city of Monterey, we're not as competitive for parks grants. And that's because we're not seen as a underserved community because we have a high median household income primarily. And we have a high park acreage within a mile of our communities. So we score very low when we go after grants. We're trying to change that so that there's a recognition that it's a very high cost of living here on the Monterey Peninsula. And there should be a cost of living adjustment so that we're not always rated below Fresno and the Central Valley and Reading and some of the other communities that have a lower household income. But that's a separate policy issue that we were tackling with our state legislatures and, and advocates at the state level.
Yeah, and I know that League California Cities frequently brings that up. And we hear, we hear about the competitive nature of grants at Ambag, at MST, at TMZ and how difficult it is to compete with other cities that are possibly with a population less advantaged or greater, greater population at all.
That's right.
A great, oh, that's it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Rush.
Nat, what would be the first legal deadline that we would have to meet?
The legal deadline, I maybe I'll defer to Chrissy, our city attorney. We, generally speaking, these should be updated at least every five to 10 years. So we are at the threshold of, of adopting a ADA transition plan. So that's, we're, we're definitely, it's, I will, I will share with you in more general terms, we're overdue for adoption of a transition plan. It is a living document, so we, the fact that we continue to update the, the database to show what progress we made is, is a, is a good thing. But it does need to go to council for adoption.
So we have a lot of discretion about the schedules for what and, and when over the next 10 year.
Some, some discretion, but it is, it is a priority. And I don't know if Chrissy, you have anything you'd like to add in terms of the flexibility and prioritization of ADA projects?
Oh, thank you, Nat. I think you summarized it well. And part of having this plan is just to prioritize where these upgrades need to be made and making sure they're funded and that we follow through with the plan. And as, as Nat stated earlier, the, the ADA is a civil rights statute. And it's the same force and effect and impact as if you were to have segregated drinking fountains, for example. So it needs to be taken just as seriously as other civil rights. And this transition plan shows the effort that the city is putting into complying with federal and state laws. So the deadline when the ADA was originally passed was five years. And obviously that's long gone. So we're, we're just, it's a work in progress and we keep it, try to keep this document current and contemporary.
Thank you. Another question. It ref, the, the transition plan references the conference center. And there, I think in the 7,000 pages that I read that there needs to be updated bathrooms at around the cost of 30,000. So my immediate reaction was, didn't we just update the conference center? And did we just update some things and not other things? I, I had the feeling that for the 60 or 66 million, we were getting a complete overhaul, but that might not be true.
And, and there are updates to, to the ADA as, and some of the regulations. We're very lucky to have a chief building official who is CASP certified, C A S P, is Certified Access Specialist. And I would have to go through and happy to, to share with you when I don't have the, the full document in front of me and I'm not a CASP certified inspector. But to, to look into that further and get back to you in terms of, in terms of what.
It moves that quickly and we're, we're held to updates that quickly.
Some of that, and it's also some of it is, for example, I'll, I'll share with you when it comes to restrooms as an example. There legally, it's required under ADA to have a certain amount of pressure so that someone in a wheelchair, for example, can roll up to the door and open the restroom door and access the restroom. Some, some, it is, some of the ADA updates that are nice to have, but are required are push buttons to allow for access into, into the building. So some of those are considerations as well.
Okay, so some will be nice to have and some will be required pretty immediately.
That's correct. And, and the ones in this list are the ones that are needed, that are identified by, by our consultant as we, we need to work towards addressing these deficiencies.
Over, over the 10, five to 10 year period. Okay. And the ones that have to be done immediately, you're doing immediately and you aren't even talking to us.
We're, that's right.
You just do them. Okay.
We, we do them where we can and where funding is available.
Right.
That's right.
Thank you.
So what happens if something that isn't currently ADA compliant and, and, and somebody complains? What, what happens? What's the response to the city? What, what's the outcome for the city?
So on, on a programmatic level, there's a grievance process and we go through a review process to see if we can make a request or someone can submit a request for a reasonable accommodation. We try to see how we can accommodate that request. If it's relating to access to a facility or a program or, or whatnot when it comes to city services. On the facility side, we sit down, we talk with our team, we identify, do we have a current funding for the project? And if not, we put it on the list and see how we can prioritize it, but it does vary case by case. So if in, in the past, you know, we've had an individual asked for, they said it was hard to access the restrooms at the conference center. We immediately go out, do a pressure test, make sure that we're, we're in compliance and we're meeting that need. In other cases, it may be related to a ramp. We don't have funding for a ramp now, but we will work with our, our great engineering team, figure out how do we put that into our, our plan. But as, as you know, the list is significant.
Okay, thank you for that. How do we get an assessment of the infrastructure that would be used by the disabled community? That isn't, that they're not able to currently utilize, right? So it's part of the assessment to see what, what facilities are used by disabled individuals. But if we don't know, if they're not accessing them because there's not the access available to them, how do we incorporate that into the assessment?
We went through a public engagement process early on, asked members of the community, we even put ads in the, the Herald and Weekly for feedback on what those in the disabled community would like to see incorporated. And we had a few individuals show up. It wasn't, you know, dozens of, of members of the public. But we, we continue to gather feedback on a case by case basis. If, if there's a need and there's a member of the community that would like to see a certain neighborhoods or sidewalks, sidewalk improvements, we, we should, we're always open to hearing that feedback.
John and Perdros, no, thank you for that. And then for, you had the slide up there where the, the different parts of the plan as it relates to how they'll, they would be funded. And for the city facilities and parks, funding total, it had identified other funds. What, what does that mean?
It, it means, I'll, I'll use Councilmember Smith's example of grants, even though they're far and few between. If they're grants that go into general funds, we, we could certainly look at those. But part of the challenge and, and being candid, correct, is that we don't have, you know, unless we start reducing city services, there aren't, there isn't the surplus of general fund that can be used to, to fund these improvements. The choice is either A, don't, don't fund ADA improvements at, at the rate we're projecting, which we don't recommend because it's, it's required by law. Option two is to utilize general funds. That would mean having to figure out how do we want to reprioritize city services and programs, which we all know we, we don't want to necessarily do. And we can talk more about this as part of the budget process. And then option three is recognizing we have this amazing community asset. We have community members in our neighborhoods that like to support projects that are important in our community, that are legally required. That's morally, you know, the right thing to do. And, and we hope to have support there for those projects.
Okay. No, thank you for that. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing something that wasn't identified there. And then the few, the last few slides, you had identified like a schedule of projects that would be done over the course of the, of the period. Are, is the funding for those projects already identified out of a budget line item? Or, or are we just kind of hoping that that's what our plan is?
It, it is our hope, yes, that, that we're, we're able to prioritize and that.
I guess a follow up to that is, is, are those assumptions based off of tangible, these things that we feel we can realistically get them done?
Our team believes that we can get them done with, as long as we, we have the engineering team staff to do it and, and the project management ability to do it, they're priorities. And we worked with, with our public works staff to build the schedule based on what we, we think we can achieve.
Okay.
If the funding is available.
Thank, thank you for that. And then my, my final question here is regarding bond measure. I know that there's been some conversation happening around the potential need for other infrastructure needs that exist within the community. I'm not a big proponent of going to bond measures, but when you had that slide up that described how much the cost is going to increase over that period of time, even if it's not that much, we do see it more than doubling. So I, I kind of just wonder, do, this may be a little bit rhetorical, but if anybody knows the answer to this question, I don't know if our finance director is listening, can, can we expect a bond measure to be more affordable for our community than delaying the infrastructure needs that exist within our community?
Yeah, I, I think we would need to look at that and have that be a part of a larger conversation. But I don't know if our city manager has anything else to add. You know, if, if you look at City of Marina, for example, did not pass their, their bond measure. It's, there are pros and cons to, to bond funding and whether, whether the community would support it for what's legally required or other improvements, we would have to, we'd have to see. But, okay, that's a challenge.
Please.
Could you put that last slide you just had that showed the three categories of the estimated budget amounts?
Sure, happy to.
I, I wanted to make a comment that corresponds to maybe some of the, the thoughts you had. The first category, the curbs, ramps, pedestrian signals, P and S. That sort of to me necessitates the conversation that we will have in 2025, where we are talking about what a future extension of measure S would look like. To me, that's the, that's the number one priority coming for us to address in part this, this first column of the 30 million. The parks, parking and facilities, parking fund, that's almost, I hate to say it, but it's almost the easiest to manage because it's the lowest amount and we have a continuing revenue.
That's right.
So to me, that's, that's kind of a
That's the reality.
Good to know. The reality is that's probably very doable. And the other category, the city facilities and parks, I think is, is the big, how do we keep ahead of this before it escalates in four years to be, you know, 28 million? And in eight years, it's 35 million or, or higher, because that doesn't go away and facilities age. And we're already behind with facilities. We know that. This is just the ADA portion of the facilities. So actually, this is a good number to see for ADA, but the need for facilities is way greater than this number. And I think that the need that we had in a previous council that we looked at was three to five years was like 98 million on infrastructure.
That's right.
So to put this together with other future, I mean, the budget process where we're going to be talking about how we handle the three to five years of facility needs, infrastructure needs plus the ADA. I don't know if there's ever any opportunities to have other funding, since you've outlined the difficulty in acquiring grants for the limitations, competitiveness, population. I just want to say the NCIP, for the years that I've been on this council, has come through time and time again, every year, addressing the highest and greatest needs of city services and facilities. And again, this year, the top five were again, right up there to address the facilities needing. Two fire stations, Hilltop, and I'm sure I'm missing one or two. But the top five were the highest amounts and we're addressing our facilities needs. I'd say that is a primary funding source, but that's up to NCIP to, to see that same priority in years to come. But I just want to point out that the NCIP has well-served and answered the need and identified the need and, and supported us in matching the dollars to the need.
Is there, is there a question at all?
Well, I just want, no, it wasn't a question, but I just wanted to make that statement in terms of where I'm seeing this going and how we'll have future conversations. So I guess the question would be, we'll have future conversations.
We will. And, and Councilmember Smith, I think, I think you brought up an excellent point, right? When we make investments towards improving our aging infrastructure, that often checks off the boxes of making those ADA improvements already. So when the conference center in the 2013 plan had millions of dollars in needs and we were able to say we got the sheer majority we were able to say we got the sheer majority of ADA deficiencies addressed as part of that remodel.
Yeah.
So that's, that's a perfect example. As as new, other existing facilities continue to be addressed, we can check off those ADA issues.
Yeah, and that could be said for the fire stations, Hilltop, and a future improvement for the public safety building.
That's exactly right. In fact, the ADA transition plan has some of those projects listed as, in terms of funding and addressing some of the ADA deficiencies based on those funding allocations at those stations, fire stations, and Hilltop.
Yep. Follow up question slash thought. I'm wondering where, if there's opportunity for us to look at our reserve, like our reserve goals, and seeing if there's a way of incorporating some of the funding associated with this with our reserve goals as well? Because I'm thinking, for an example, the conference center, you know, we've already been putting some money aside for that. But are there, I kind of vaguely remember that there was goals that we had established for each of those reserves. Is that, is my understanding of that correct?
Yes, we have established goals for, for instance, the conference center is, the goal is to have enough money in the bank, in the bank to completely overhaul rehabilitate the conference center 2030, 2032, where we need probably 15, 18 million dollars for the overhaul. So we are using the reserves also when, when we have upgrades to do in the sports center now or in other facilities. So when, when you see funding coming forward, you will see that there is an allocation from the reserves already towards those projects, to to complete those projects. $30,000 for the conference center and ADA improvements is nothing, is a nothing burger. It's, it's, it's probably replace the hooks from 56 inches from the ground to 54 inches of the ground, you know, in the bathrooms or so. These are very, very minor changes that, that of course change year after year with the, with the evolving of the ADA requirements. So when Nat spoke about the projects that we hope we can do over the next couple of months and, and possibly 12 to 18 months, together with, with Public Works, when we look at existing projects, our, our office has been strengthened by our Middlebury intern Maya, and her tasking is to find those low hanging fruit and, and see, okay, where are those things where we just simple modifications or not costly add-ons can just remove a lot of those barriers right now. So when, when you ask about the question, what, what can we do and that isn't realistic, it's pretty realistic that we will find little twists and tweaks there that within existing funding without, within the allocation of maybe also contingency for the projects, we can remove quite a number of those barriers as well. So all in all, yes, we are using the reserves for that. And as, as, as counsel also pointed out, a lot of the upgrades and projects that we are doing include always ADA improvements and they will be funded also from the reserves.
Perfect. Are there any other questions? Okay, well, Nat, thanks again for the presentation, and I think you started it off well with the identification of the fact that not only is there's legal compliance, but it's also the moral thing to do. And so, and I think clearly from the way that the conversation was going here, there's another component, which is the financial realization of how do we handle all this? So I think it's a good conversation to have so far, and I think it's time to open it up for the public to participate with us here. So with that, I'll open it up in the chamber. Anybody in the chamber wishes to speak on this item? All right, let's check online. I'll do a countdown for folks, use a raise hand function via Zoom to five, four, three, two, one. We have four participants, so we'll go ahead and start with those speakers.
First, I'm calling on Mr. Rosen.
Hello, Mayor and City Council. This is Brian Rosen again. I just want to mention that Santa Barbara has a lot of downtown ambassadors walking around helping people, including disabled, including homeless, whoever needs help. They're very helpful and caring. I'm, there was a disabled veteran who could hardly move, who was in front of fishermen's wharf. And there's a real problem with restrooms because even if they're ADA compliant, they close at a certain hour and then maybe there could be some kind of guide that was given out by such downtown ambassadors to people like that who are disabled in their wheelchairs and sitting in front of fishermen's wharf trying to survive and where they could use the restroom, maybe the police station or the could let them in 24 hours a day, there could be a guide so people could get around and know, or people could get a permit with a way to open up the restrooms when they're closed. You know, they're closed in the parking lots a lot of times at night at certain hour. So people could get some kind of permit, that would be helpful. And furthermore, I know two small business, two, a small business non in Santa Barbara, because they can't afford to be ADA compliant, they are, they don't open up their restroom to the public, just their employees. So certain businesses really need some assistance, particularly ones that, this is a little food store co-op, not in San, not in Monterey, but needs help to be able to have an adequate restroom for eight, for elderly, disabled, et cetera. And so I hearken back to a couple of weeks ago at the 370,000 per banquet chairs, and there were some other things, I can't recall exactly what they were. So I think there could be some priorities made. So we have more money to help the elderly and the disabled. And furthermore, about, we don't want to go backwards, MST buses after 20 years are helping people, elderly people get their bicycles onto the bike rack. Now they won't do it all of a sudden, I'm told by an elderly Monterey resident I came across. And that is a great hardship because the bus riders were wonderful at helping accommodate bicycles that elderly people can't lift them up into the bike racks. Ed Smith is on the MST board and would you please direct him to, to do something about this and to restore the Carmel Valley route, which really helps the disabled people now having to make another, another transfer is a great hardship and it takes a lot longer for people to get out there. And it's just difficult for an elderly or disabled person to travel around. It must have been a good route because it, thank you, thank you very much.
Hello again. I apologize, I missed the beginning of the presentation, so I, I'm not sure if I'm going to mention something that was covered. But I've, I've attended the current CDBG meetings and there are funds, from my understanding, that would come from CDBG for ADA and elderly necessities. So I just wanted to point that out. And also just a separate comment, every time that we talk about grants and we say that we don't qualify by comparison to other cities because we have such a high income, I'm just wondering, how is that high income determined? Because with 66% renters in our city, I'm pretty sure most of those renters are not high income. So it'd be interesting to see how exactly and why we are classified as a high income area and possibly add that to the requalification process that we're trying to submit, not just saying that we have a high cost of living. We have a high cost of living, but we also have a lot, and I would say almost the majority of our workers are low income. So I just thought I'd throw that out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is a telephone caller with the last three digits, 705.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I want to comment on this item, but Mayor, I did have my hand raised for public comment and you didn't acknowledge it. Please pay more attention and for that, and thank you for allowing three minutes because no one else does. So appreciate that. I witnessed a disabled person trying to cross a pedestrian zone and a black car, a huge SUV, scooted across in the, in the cross street and started literally, it was like three feet away from this person that was slowly crossing the street. And I think that you really have to start dealing with the rudeness of people being pushed off as pedestrians, particularly the disabled, because they're very slow and these people are very impatient, they're very rude, and they just as soon would run you over. So that's, I don't know if you have to put a speed bump there, a huge one to discourage them from this behavior, or cameras, or even fake cameras, but something has got to be done because it's becoming incredibly dangerous to, to, to go across these, these streets. Just try it yourself. And so, thank you.
And our last speaker is another telephone caller. I believe this is Ms. Beatty.
This is Nina Beatty. I hoped that Jensen Hughes would advocate for city compliance with the state and federal rules I brought to the city's attention for years, but I found nothing to address the extensive disabled access issues I've raised with him. I'm speaking to you remotely because the city staff denies me access to City Hall in violation of the Brown Act, which requires meeting chambers are accessible to disabled persons. The city made the chambers inaccessible by installing Wi-Fi years after I began telling the city about this access barrier for me. And they did so without any notification, without any request for public input, even though other options exist. Though I'm named and the staff report is being emailed, the city only contacted me last Friday afternoon about the agenda and the 15 attachments, just like the general public. To repeat, many of the city's programs, facilities, services, policies and practices are not accessible to me because the city's increasing choice of EMF RF emitting technologies. Even though wired options exist, the cities refuse to engage in meaningful interactive dialogue or to provide reasonable accommodation to reduce EMF exposure and remove this physical barrier. The city's behavior is unlawful and discriminatory to the degree of abuse. The city attorney and her office have repeatedly blocked my access and reasonable disabled accommodation requests, as have other staff. And she claims the city is not even required to accommodate me and that I'm not disabled by electromagnetic sensitivity. In 2016, she said, it's not had held to be something that needs to be accommodated at this point. It's still being studied and it's been studied for years, like five years probably or more so. And I said, it constitutes a disability if it causes an interruption of physical system. That's under the law. And she said, there's a big debate over that and the federal government and that issue and that position's been advocated for the government and it's still being studied. Title II regulations and Appendix J says the primary object of attention in cases brought under the ADA should be whether entities covered under the ADA have complied with their obligations and whether discrimination has occurred, not whether the individual meets the definition of disability. The question of whether an individual meets the definition of disability under this part should not demand extensive analysis. Ms. Davy disputes the regulations, is unwilling to comply with the primary object. DAF repeatedly falsifies my statements, eliminating references to ADA for housing and disability. And it appears Jensen Hughes has joined them. Attachment G fails to address, include the issues I raised in my comments, though they did so for others. And they misrepresented my disabled accommodation request as mere concerns, just the city's staff does. On July 19, 2022, I told the city council, for 14 years, city staff had engaged in bruises, misrepresentation and mischaracterization of my requests and state and federal rules, intimidation and frightening attacks to block me from any accommodation or even to be able to live in Monterey per FHA, and have displayed willful indifference to what federal and state laws require erecting more and more barriers in public facilities over my objections. There are other people in the city disabled like me, and the city has heard from them and ignored them.
And with that, we'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the council for a motion and deliberation.
I'll make a motion that we
Sorry, hold on one second.
We need to pull, well, we need to pull back to the spot when Brian Rosen was speaking because we lost a quorum for a little bit there, when one of the council members left the room. So we just need to be able to play that comment again. So this is the legal advice from our city attorney.
Okay, did you hear the comments when you were back there?
I heard probably 75% of Mr. Rosen's comments.
All right, let's let him go again.
I can tell you at the point where
You're going to play the recording?
This should be at, this should be the right spot.
and caring homeless on that Baron City Council. Hello, Baron City Council, this is Brian Rosen again. I just want to mention that Santa Barbara has a lot of downtown ambassadors walking around helping people, including disabled, including homeless, whoever needs help, and they're very helpful and caring. I'm, there was a disabled veteran who could hardly move, who was in front of fishermen's wharf. And there's a real problem with restrooms because even if they're ADA compliant, they close at a certain hour and then maybe there could be some kind of guide that was given out by such downtown ambassadors to people like that who are disabled in their wheelchairs and sitting in front of fishermen's wharf trying to survive and where they could use the restroom, maybe the police station or the could let them in 24 hours a day, there could be a guide so people could get around and know, or people could get a permit with a way to open up the restrooms when they're closed. You know, they're closed in the parking lots a lot of times at night at certain hour. So people could get some kind of permit, that would be helpful. And furthermore, I know two small business, two, a small business non in Santa Barbara, because they can't afford to be ADA compliant, they are, they don't open up their restroom to the public, just their employees. So certain businesses really need some assistance, particularly ones that, this is a little food store co-op, not in San, not in Monterey, but needs help to be able to have an adequate restroom for eight, for elderly, disabled, et cetera. And so I hearken back to a couple of weeks ago at the 370,000 per banquet chairs, and there were some other things, I can't recall exactly what they were. So I think there could be some priorities made. So we have more money to help the elderly and the disabled. And furthermore, about, we don't want to go backwards, MST buses after 20 years are helping people, elderly people get their bicycles onto the bike rack. Now they won't do it all of a sudden, I'm told by an elderly Monterey resident I came across. And that is a great hardship because the bus riders were wonderful at helping accommodate bicycles that elderly people can't lift them up into the bike racks. Ed Smith is on the MST board and would you please direct him to, to do something about this and to restore the Carmel Valley route, which really helps the disabled people now having to make another, another transfer is a great hardship and it takes a lot longer for people to get out there. And it's just difficult for an elderly or disabled person to travel around. It must have been a good route because it, thank you.
Okay. All right. So bring it back to council for motion deliberation.
The comment first.
Please.
So the clerk had marked Um, so the clerk could mark, I heard everything from first second to one minute and 38 seconds and I departed. And, uh, so I'll make a motion that we accept the report on the ADA uh, transition, uh, from staff tonight.
I'll second.
It's a motion and second. Any other discussion? All right. I just have a few thoughts. Um, Esther had made a, uh, asked a question around, um, what makes us a high income city? And my assumption, my understanding is that it's often based off of the um, median income, um, median household income in Monterey. And then, um, Mr. Rosen, I think brought up a, a point around disabled vets. And I think one interesting point to make about the makeup of our population in the city of Monterey is that there are a lot of, um, it is a heavy military community. So it is something it, I think just gives more reason for us to, to look at this. Um, a- a- as a way to, uh, make sure that we're not just looking after, um, all folks with, with disabilities, but, um, also those that have in particular, that have served, served our country. Um, regarding the MST comment that Mr. Rosen made, um, Ed, could you remind us why MST moved from um, having the driver put the bike on to not doing it? Was it a liability issue?
There were, uh, repeated workers comp claims and issues. Um, there was, uh, it was brought to the union and discussed as part of the, uh, labor agreement. Uh, but the, uh, executive director made the decision to cease that because it impacted insurance and impacted workers comp. And if they, the person was not able to, um, lift their own bicycle onto the bus, then the drivers were not expected to do that. And it was related to insurance and, uh, workers comp.
Okay. Thank you for that. Um, so two final thoughts here. I, I, I want to emphasize the point around the bond, not to say that we need to do a bond, but just around the point of us figuring out a, a plan that, that works. Um, I mean, if, if we're going to be serious about this and we're going to spend this time and energy having the conversation, um, I think we need to figure out how we're going to pay for it. And, um, and, and so if, if a bond is, is something that will help us address the need over the long term and allow us to make it more affordable for the city, then, um, that maybe that's something that we should consider. Um, what are those, um, um, grant opportunities that exist for us as a, what is oftentimes identified as, as a wealthier community? Wh- wh- what do those opportunities look like? So if that, if that's what we're going to pursue, let's see what's actually out there that we can qualify for. And let's see how that can be looped into some kind of budget proposal. Um, but I think we need to be serious about how, how we're going to fund these and, and do the work around figuring that, that piece out. And then, um, the last thought, and it kind of transitions from that last point is I don't know if there's opportunities as it relates to the hospitality industry. Um, but I think if there's an angle there that we can work with the state on saying, hey, this could really help generate additional revenue in the city of Monterey and help our city be successful in, in supporting the industries that we have here. Um, but more importantly, and how cool would it be is if Monterey was identified as a top rated, um, community for visitors to come because it was an accessible community. So I, you know, just some, just some thoughts. And I appreciate all the work that staff has done. I know it's taken, um, a lot of work. Um, and I just don't want it to go for not, I, I want us to be successful and, and really, um, getting this done for, for, for everybody. So with that, I will go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor. Oh, sorry. Yes.
Just wanted to clarify. So in the motion, you said you were receiving the report, but I believe we need an approval.
Oh.
Is that a
I'm sorry, what?
I, I think we need the council to approve the plan, not just receive the report.
Um, so staff recommendation was the city council approve the ADA transition plan. And that's what my motion is to accept that.
Is that
Second.
Perfect. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. With that, we'll go to council comments.
Uh, I'm going to address something we've heard from, uh, Mr. Rosen with a couple of questions frequently, and that's on bus route 24, which is MST's Carmel Valley bus route. Uh, I've heard that from several of his friends I've met with, uh, Lorna Moffett and discussed it. And it, it was part of a reduction by the MST board. When they went to, um, safer routes, better, better routes, more economical routes. That action was taking place before I got on the board. However, um, in looking at bus route 24, the ridership was relatively low. Uh, was not really supported with the ridership and that was one of the routes that was, um, removed. And so there are a couple of alternative routes that do take longer. Uh, however, that was, uh, removed by the previous board as they adopted, um, the more economical routes. And part of that was looking at not only the numbers of the routes, but the cost, the, the time, the bus cost, the driver cost and, um, how, how many jobs were they delivering riders to? How many schools were they delivering the riders to? What, what was the demographic of the rider and what was the necessity for doctor's appointments and all that? So put into a matrix, the decision was to eliminate, uh, route 24. So I repeatedly get questions and repeatedly, uh, advocated to bring it back and to take it back to the MST board. And, uh, to advocate for that. Um, I've done that with consultation with the executive director and with other members of the board. Um, but it does not seem to have the evidence and data to support a reevaluation of the prior decisions. So as it stands now, beyond my control and my advocacy, uh, bus route 24 to Carmel Valley will remain not as one of the service areas.
And Councilor Smith, Councilor Rash.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I have one comment about, um, the first week in December. The, um, executive board of the Monterey Vista Neighborhood Association went to the sentencing of, um, Les Flores and, um, he was given eight years and four months in a combination of prison and jail. And, um, I just want to mention that Chief Hober was there for the sentencing and, um, how much it meant to the community members who were there in support of the neighborhood. Um, especially the Seattle Vista neighborhood that has been upset by, um, these shenanigans slash felonies, um, for years. And I just want to say the Monterey PD has been so supportive of the Monterey Vista neighborhood and all the contention over this and, um, how stressed the citizens were. We had the two SWAT events, which were very traumatic for citizens. And so, um, I, I just want to commend, um, the PD and, um, that Chief Hober was there just meant so much. And thank you, Mr. City Manager for that also.
Beautiful. Thank you for that. Um, I kind of want to address some of the public comments as, as well. Um, I think there was a, a lot of statements that the city isn't very accommodating and, um, and I, I think that my sense is that we're doing the best that we can where we can. Can we do better? Absolutely. And I think that's why we had this conversation tonight, um, with the last agenda item. Um, in regards to making reasonable accommodations, I think the biggest thing that we've done is we're the, one of the few cities remaining in the county that can, that have continued to allow, um, public comments to come in via Zoom. Um, despite, despite efforts of trying to push that back and, um, and, and, and require people to come in, in person. Um, regarding, um, the buses, and I, I appreciate hearing Councilor Smith that, um, you're, you're working to the extent that you can on trying to get the, the route back, um, on the peninsula. I, I hope that as we look at the increase in, in housing in our community, um, that it, it helps support that, um, that, that effort. Um, I know that MST is going through a lot and trying to figure out how to balance its budget. But it, it is tough when, and I've heard it from a lot of residents that have expressed concerns around utilizing that bus route and, and actually um, a good portion of those folks that have talked to me about it have gone from using public transportation to driving a car again, um, because of how much more time it would take them to get to and from where they're going. Um, that's real concern. And that's us going backwards when we need to be able to find a way of leaning forward and making sure that we're providing those opportunities for our community. So if that in any way helps amplify your efforts in, in your representation of the city, um, at the MST board, just appreciate your representation there.
Yep.
Um, and with that, I, oh, and I want to again, welcome, um, Councilmember Rash and, and a big congratulations on, on winning the election and, and look forward to working with you on the council. So.
Thank you.
Um, just a comment that relates to Bill. He was here, watched, took notes and, uh, congratulation to him for not only his willingness to give you up on two Tuesdays, uh, every month and many other meetings and sessions. So he'll become a hobbyist, uh, watching the meetings with Zoom or he'll drag himself here and watch as well. But kudos to any partner that sacrifices that for a candidate. So congratulations again.
Thank you.
Or do something else, like not watch.
Oh, he's watching.
Cause I, I've been watching sometimes, but you know, after a while. All righty, with that, we'll go pass it to Hans for City Manager Report.
I like to watch the reruns over and over. So, uh, in that spirit, um, I want to thank the council, uh, for, for the past year. This is our last scheduled council meeting. So knock on wood that we do not have to have a, uh, unforeseen council meeting before the year turns to 2025. So, um, my, my heartfelt thank you to, to the council. Um, we accomplished again, uh, large scale work program on, on so many levels and also just say the words housing element that we passed tonight, uh, with the second reading. Um, that, that's major accomplishment, uh, for the council, the planning commission and, uh, equally also for our staff. And as well as so many other, uh, small, uh, elements or small, uh, steps that we took to make the city a better place together with you. My, my thank you goes to all our staff members, um, who have worked um, diligently on all the priorities that council has given us. And even though this is not a staff member of the city manager, um, I, I would not do it right if I wouldn't mention our attorney's office, our city attorney, assistant city attorney, who, uh, have helped us tremendously to, to, to stay the course. And, uh, to make sure that everything we do is, is following the letter of the law and then protecting the city from, um, from any, um, difficult situation that may arise if we don't do it correctly. So with that, uh, First Night Monterey is, as always, um, beating the drums, uh, in front of City Hall on, on, uh, on 31st, uh, waking us all up at our desks, meaning, um, it's time to go outside and enjoy, uh, first night's, uh, celebrations. Um, they are putting a great program together. The city of Monterey uh, remains, I believe, the major sponsor there with $35,000 that we are contributing to, to their success. And, um, I invite everyone to, to show up and, and enjoy those community festivities. I believe First Night Monterey is the last remaining continuously operating first night in the nation now. And, um, uh, it's, it's a wonderful event and I hope you all will come out. I wish you all happy holidays and, um, have a wonderful uh, New Year's celebration.
Um, I, I, I'm going to throw out one, um, last minute thing, which is the local road safety plan. Um, I, I went to the first meeting, I couldn't stay the entire time. But when it comes back to the council, and this is mainly a message for my colleagues, and hopefully we can pass this along to Gino and Dr. Barber as well. Um, but the time is now to be able to share feedback and input. When it comes to the council, we're not changing anything really at that point. So, um, I really encourage my colleagues to attend the next one, which is scheduled, uh, well, it's tentatively scheduled for February. So I would encourage you to keep an eye out for that and, and, and be present and, and, um, provide feedback. Um, so that when it comes to us, um, we feel better about the, the plan that we'll be proposing, uh, approving. So. And with that, I'm wishing everybody a happy holiday season and we'll see you in the busy new year. All right. With that, we'll go ahead and adjourn. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.